Good evening. Please allow me to call to order Ferndale City Council Meeting of Monday, July the 26th, 2010. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Baker, here. Galloway, here. Lennon, here. Piana, here. Mayor Covey.
Here as well. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have approval of the agenda, your honor.
Yes. Is the Fire Chief here tonight? Chief Sullivan? Mr. Ritter, did you mention to him wanting a brief presentation on the electrical?
No, actually, I wasn't able to get ahold of him or DPW Director Fertides, but Mike Pelchesko from DTE Energy will attend the next council meeting on August 8th.
All right. I had asked, and this has to do with the agenda, I had asked the city manager to try to help me get a brief presentation at the top of the meeting, just to explain to the residents what's going on with our electrical grid. How many of you have lost power in the last two weeks? All right. Well, evidently neither the DPW Director or the Fire Chief is available tonight. I will ask the city manager to get the council members a report as soon as possible, and we are trying to get on DTE to get them to fix permanently the problems with the grid. But from what I'm told, it's a combination of storms, trees, heavy use because of the heat and the humidity, and an antiquated electrical grid. So bear with us, and we'll, as fast as we can, work with the utility to make sure that people have power. With that, is there-
I'm sorry. Can I make an amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
To the agenda. A couple of meetings ago, council had approved the fee schedule with the exception of the auto parking fees, which they tabled to this meeting. It's not on the agenda, so I would ask that you add it to the consent agenda to table consideration of auto parking fees indefinitely at this point.
So would that be item HIJKLM?
Six M, yep.
Six M, and the motion would be to table indefinitely-
Indefinitely.
-any parking fee changes.
That's correct.
Any objection to that? Then a motion, a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
I would move to approve the agenda with the addition by the city clerk.
Support. Motion made. Baker seconded. Galloway. Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker, yes. Galloway, yes. Lennon, yes. Piana, yes. And Mayor Covey.
Yes, that is unanimously approved. We have a number of presentations. Madam Clerk, first one.
Ferndale Community Foundation Grant Awards.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Dan Martin, and I'm chairperson of the Ferndale Community Foundation, and with me is Helen Weber, our treasurer. And the Ferndale Community Foundation, over the course of the year, raises money in order to put it back into the community by granting area nonprofits money in order to fund their projects that really promote health, education, and the overall welfare of the city. So tonight's kind of a cool night. Tonight's the night we get to give the money away. So what I'm going to do is run through the recipients this year, and talk about a little bit of their program, and how much money they've been awarded. If you could hold your applause till the end, we want to recognize all of these charities. But as I call you, if you can come on up and get your check, and we'll create a line here. So we'll start out with Fern Care Free Clinic, which has received $1,000 for funding for the temporary clinic that's going to open at the Kulik Center on August 5th. Is that correct, Bob?
Uh, August 7th.
August 7th. The Ferndale Public Library is receiving $1,200 for the Adult Career Development Collection and Testing Programs. Is there somebody here from the library?
Jim O'Donnell?
Come on up and get your check.
Good timing.
Yeah. Your timing's impeccable. We funded another, we have funded a number of projects at the library over the years, and we're very pleased to continue to do so. The Ferndale Schools Fine Arts Boosters is receiving $750 for the True Colors Training and Development Program for their orchestra. So I'd like to invite them up. Michigan AIDS Coalition, which is a locally-based AIDS organization that is the largest AIDS organization in the state, is receiving $1,200 for their youth adult mentorship program. And we have Helen Hicks, the MAC CEO, here today. Next, we have Michigan's Fallen, who's received $700 for the very popular Memorial Day Foot Float. And we've got several representatives here from that organization. It's really become a mainstay of the Memorial Day Parade, and really a wonderful addition to it. We have Peace Action of Michigan Education Fund, who's receiving $500 to contribute towards the peace collection at the library. And these will feature materials promoting peace and reconciliation. And we funded this program for a number of years, and Frank O'Donnell's here to accept the check on their behalf. And lastly, we have Wags &amp; Wishes, which is a new program in Ferndale that is receiving $1,000 towards their pet control program. And I know they had a bit of an emergency run today, so I don't see any, or is anybody from Wags &amp; Wishes here? Okay. Well, we certainly want to recognize those folks as well. So this, what's that? This is, our recipients for this year in total, we've given out $6,350, which is more than we have the last couple of years, and brings our total contribution to community projects to over $40,000 in the last six years. So let's cheer for everybody. This is a great way to do it. And one last thing, I want to take a moment. There are hundreds of volunteers that help the foundation through the year and our various fundraisers, but I do want to recognize a very dedicated Board of Directors, and if they're here right now, if they could stand and be recognized. George Chapp, Matt Nowaczek, Melinda Couples, Kim Beebe, Helen Weber, of course, Don Dixon, Jeannie Davis, get up. Greg Polica, Mayor Craig Covey, Councilwoman Melanie Piana, Joanne Wilcox has worked with us this year, Tamiko Gumbelton, and Judy Palmer. So I want to recognize those folks as well, because they do a ton of work. So with that, I thank you very much for this opportunity. This is, there's a lot of great work by nonprofits in the city of Ferndale, and we are so pleased and blessed to be able to help facilitate these projects. So thank you all very, very much.
Thanks, Dan Martin. Nice job. It's a great, great organization. Madam Clerk, what's the next item on our agenda?
Announcement of the July Beautification Awards.
Excellent. I suspect Peggy Snow will be coming forward.
Good evening. I would like to say that the Beautification Commission has been a recipient of grants from the foundation. We used to maintain the garden behind the library, and we used it to buy flowers. And we also, we had a speaker coming during Green Week to talk about butterfly gardens, what's a plant, and how to maintain it, and whatever. So we, and we still have a little left for future projects, so we appreciated that. Tonight, I'm going to announce the two residential and the commercial award for July. And anybody who lives over on the east side will, has surely noticed, the northeast service station that's there. It's a service garage, and it's right in the corner of Woodward Heights in Hilton. And they have really dressed up that corner with all kinds of plants, and the raised flower bed and plants, and a trellis for vines and things. It's, and then they're also, as we were noticing them, they were actually doing the back area too. It's just really very attractive over there. And our first residential is Christine Walbridge. She lives at 2026 Martin Road, and she has a beautiful front and backyard. And I really didn't get a chance to talk to her, we played phone tag a lot, but I did get a chance to see her yard, and I think she has one of every plant between the front and the back. It's just beautiful. And then the second residential is Brian McNamara. He lives at 1528 West Hazelhurst. And Brian has only lived in the house since February, and it's just amazing. He said when he moved in, there was only like a few irises there. And he has raised flower beds across the front, both sides, one's all vegetables, then the other's just beautiful with perennials. And the backyard is gorgeous. I couldn't believe he's only been there six months, you know? So I'm so glad that he was nominated, because he surely deserved the award.
Well, Brian worked for a while, or maybe still works at Western Market.
You know, that's-
Maybe he gets, you think he gets an employee discount?
I don't know. You know, I didn't, it was after I left that, I recognized him a little bit, and I didn't get a chance to ask him, but I thought the same thing. But still, he did a beautiful job. He knows what he's talking about when he's down there selling flowers. And I'd like to ask if anybody knows of any attractive blocks for our block award that we give out? And if you have any nominations, it could be your block or another block that you're aware of, I would appreciate them being called into the DPW by Friday, August 6th. And I would also like to mention our perennial exchange, which is Saturday, September 25th, from 9:00 to noon, so you can kind of plan ahead when you're dividing up some of the plants in your garden. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Just a quick question. I did notice a block that I was interested in nominating, and I then noticed that they had one in the past, but it was well over 10 years ago. Would we be willing to reconsider?
No.
Okay.
There's your short answer.
Do we have to spread the wealth?
Well, that's just, that's it, because it's only fair that, you know, if we didn't have any other blocks that we could find, that we would do it, but I'm just saying, you know, it's only fair if, because you only give one a year, to spread them out to everybody else. So we kind of do that too with our nominate, our awards. There's a deadline. I keep a list of them, and there's a deadline that they have to go through, you know, a period of time before they can be nominated again, so that same people aren't getting the awards all the time, so.
Well, then I'll be sure not to submit that one.
Right. Well, look for another one, though.
Well, thank you. Applause for the committee and the recipients, please. Item C, Madam Clerk.
That would be a presentation by the Disability Advisory Committee.
Excellent.
We're here, but I'm the only one that's coming up to the front.
You got Monica Mills behind you, on the other side.
Whatever you want to do, or you can go there. There's a microphone there, too. Well, good evening. We're here to announce that today is the 20th anniversary of the signing of the ADA, and we're real excited about that, and we wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. As a sort of part of our celebration, sorry, as part of our celebration, we have compiled, we have compiled a packet that has various information for businesses. At this point, we're starting out with the Nine Mile Corridor, but we're going to look around further, and we've got, oh, and I think Monica has it all here, we've got some various statistics that will show you why it's important to consider making your business accessible, because there are so much, there's so much money available through people with disabilities. We're also showing the tax incentives that you can get if you choose to do that, and hopefully with some personal attention, we can talk to people and convince them that it's a very good idea. I know it's a tough economic time, but we're hoping that we can at least get some enthusiasm. There are small fixes that you can do. If you have just one step to get into your business, you can get a small ramp and a doorbell, which you can get from Home Depot, that costs about 30 bucks. So there are really some very small things you can do to become more accessible. So we're hoping that that in the next couple of months will spur people on to do things. And I guess the other thing I wanted to say about this 20th anniversary, which really struck me, is that the House of Representatives in Washington, DC, has become accessible, and so one of the only, if not the first, quadriplegic congressman is, was able to open the session today from the, I forgot what you call that, when you go on, the dais. But that's because it's now accessible, so if they can do it, why can't we do it? Thanks. Anything you want to add?
Should I show these?
Yeah.
What's the camera?
If you show it towards us, the camera will find you.
Okay. This is the idea with the ramp and the doorbell.
That's portable, so easy to move. And then we have a letter, right? And the ADA Guide for Small Businesses.
Excellent.
Yeah, which explains everything about the tax incentives, and we actually are also going to include this letter, which gives you some figures as to why it would be a good thing to do.
Excellent.
All right. And actually, one more thing. Every time I come to City Hall and I press the button to open up the doors out there, I'm thrilled that we actually spent the money and did that. Thank you very much, City of Ferndale, because it's really a great feeling to be able to get in and out of someplace on your own. There are other parts of City Hall that could use a little tweaking, but I'll leave that to you to discuss another time.
Well, we're actually going to discuss it some this evening, and about making the upstairs more accessible to folks, you know, in wheelchairs and stuff.
It would be wonderful.
Yeah. After tonight, the front door will be handicapped accessible.
That would be wonderful, because it does feel a little bit like you're going through the kitchen when you come in that bathroom. But, you know, I mean, it's okay. It's just, it really does make a difference. If you've ever, I, most people don't have that experience, but if you go to a restaurant and you have to actually go through the kitchen to get into the restaurant, it just doesn't feel great. You just don't feel like a real person, so yeah, that would be great. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for all the hard work of your committee.
Hey, we're trying.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
A hand for the volunteers. And Madam Clerk, our final presentation for tonight.
Is by the Downtown Development Authority.
Chris Hughes is making her way to the dais.
Good evening, Chris Hughes, Communication and Marketing Manager for the Ferndale DDA, Mayor, Council, and everybody watching at home. I'm here to tell you about the summer of 2010, and we're calling it more fun than that. I'm just going to give you a little bit of a wrap-up, and I want everybody at home to take out their pencils and papers and their calendars, so they can mark in all the fun stuff coming up in Ferndale in the next month ahead. First, I want to do a little wrap-up of Fido Does Ferndale, which actually turns out to be Fido Did Ferndale, and there was a great crowd. We had really, we were on our way to having our biggest crowd ever. Lots of people came to the streets with their dogs and their dog desires, and met lots of dogs they wanted to adopt. And then also coming was the rain, and so that kind of put an end to it. But in spite of that, we were able to have a raffle, and I wanted to say we still have some very cool raffle prizes that nobody had an opportunity to buy a ticket for, so you can come and buy one for 50 bucks, and it all goes to Wags &amp; Wishes, and it's available through our office at 149 West Nine Mile. You can get ahold of us through 248-546-1632. But as a result of Fido Does Ferndale, Wags &amp; Wishes, with all those people on the street, and the publicity that went on for the event prior to with TV and radio and the newspapers, on our website, on Facebook, Fido Does Ferndale, all that good stuff, Wags &amp; Wishes was able to independently raise about over $1,000 to benefit that great new shelter, and you can still make donations there at wagsandwishes.org. So just wanted to fill you in on that.
Hey, Chris, besides the rain, though, there was quite, quite some wind. I think I saw Toto go flying by.
Toto went blind, and the wicked witch followed, but anyway, it was, it was quite a night. It was, it was a night for dogs, that's for sure. Smelled like a wet one by the time it was over. Anyhow. Okay, I'm going to steal a little bit of your thunder, Mayor, and promote the Ferndale Pub Crawl. It's Friday, July 30th. We start at 7:00 PM at Boogie Fever. Where it ends, nobody knows. There's 21, 22 pubs and clubs to visit. It's one of the key mark, Keystone events of downtown Ferndale. Come on down, $10. I can't imagine where you can have a better time for 10 bucks. So I had a cool picture of the mayor, but you can see it all over, kind of. Anyway, after that, Saturday, August 14th, we go, Go Green, and it is the Green Cruise with the Sierra Club. That's a very cool event, reminding us all of why we like to recycle and cycle that day. It starts at 8:00 AM with a progressive bike ride, and 9:00 AM, there's a family ride. 11:00 AM, we've got the parade. All day long, there's a climbing tower, crests from scraps, sidewalk chalk, lots of great stuff going on. If you want more information on that, you can either visit the downtown Ferndale website or the sierraclub.org/greencruise. August 19th, 20th, and 21st, everybody knows what that is, Ferndale Woodward Dream Cruise Weekend, but new this year on August 19th on West Nine Mile. It's going to be a family, family fun day. Organizer Michael Larry has promised us great stuff, and we know that there's good things coming, so be sure to mark your calendars for that, and come on downtown. Merchants will be open, there'll be all kinds of great, great things to do downtown, so don't miss out on that. Although a lot of what happens downtown is, is good, clean fun, it's also fun with a twist, because it results in good business and, and things going well, and that's one of the things that we, of course, focus on, which is business. And this Wednesday at 9:00 AM, we have a business-to-business networking meeting called FerNet. It will feature M1 Studios and information on how to market your business with a camera, whether you're on the internet or commercials, et cetera. It will be at Blooms by JR Designs. It's totally free. We invite every business or potential business to come and join us, and find out what they can do with a camera. Finally, all that leads to this, all these good things that we had to say, kind of went over it last time, but now open, we have Rouge Makeup and Nail Salon on Woodward, Ardent Cause, which is a technology and business consulting company for nonprofits, they're at 195 West Nine Mile, and Visions of Canada, who make the world's thinnest glasses, so I don't know what that is, but they are located in the Lofts. We'll find out more about them as time goes on, but they're in the Lofts. Coming soon, scheduled to open on August the 6th is Highbred Moments. They're at 22730 Woodward, which is the old Lofts rental location, and they are going to feature new and used records and clothing. Treat Dreams Bakehouse and Micro Creamery. I'm going to mark that date down for sure, 22965 Woodward. Painting with a Twist, which is you can create a painting in an evening. You go in and they have a canvas, and you paint a picture, and all of you in the same room paint the same picture. That's kind of cool. That's in the refurbished, recently renovated Asaji building at, I call it that, it's not all Asaji, but 330 and 320 West Nine Mile. And finally, Mashago, Miss Chicago Pizza, Ferndale Style, Chicago Style Pizza at 255 West Nine. Oh, three more. Torino Espresso Bar in the Lofts, Grasshopper Pub in Replacing Gracie's Underground, and Valentine Vodka Distillery. So lots of new business going on in town, great things happening. Also, the DDA, I just want to mention this, the DDA Board of Directors did meet last Tuesday, last Thursday, to discuss, in an informational session, some issues going on in town regarding the sound ordinance and the effect on sound in the downtown, on the downtown and our neighboring residential neighborhoods. So there was no formal action taken, but it was an informational session. You'll hear more about this later, and I think there's some people in the room that will probably want to be talking about that. But that's all from the DDA. For all that information, downtownferndale.com, and it's a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That concludes our presentations. Madam Clerk.
That brings us to call to audience, your honor.
Call to audience. The 30-minute portion of the meeting, it is about one minute till 8:00, so we'll go till 29:00 after. We ask a three-minute limit. We do have a full agenda tonight, and you may speak on any issue that is not on the agenda. Please give us your name and address. Please, no personal attacks. Keep your remarks as courteous as possible. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is David Spelman, and I'm a police officer for the city of Ferndale. I've been employed by the city for 15 years, and for the last 10 years, I've been the treasurer of our patrol union. I am speaking tonight to advise the citizens that not only were eight police officers laid off June 30th, but as of July 22nd, the minimum staffing levels for our patrol officers have been reduced, putting few officers on the road per shift, thus risking the safety of the community and the officers themselves. Our staffing levels were put together 25 years ago to ensure the maximum level of safety and the quickest response time. The city is not safer than it was 25 years ago, so why are we reducing our community's protection? I understand the financial constraints the city is under, but I don't understand the financial logic that is being used. For instance, on tonight's agenda, we are looking at giving the police chief a pay raise, and reorganizing the police administration to save command officers from being demoted. Why is the same structure of command needed when there is 25% less patrol officers to supervise? I would think using the money saved by holding off on a raise for the chief, or reducing the command structure to bring back more officers on the street would be logical, because it is the officers on the street that provide the most direct safety for our community. I am proud to say I grew up in the Ferndale community, in a time when we were known for our school system, our DPW services, our recreational programs, and our police and fire. These were the reasons that my parents chose Ferndale. But I am sad to say we have lost or suffered major declines in many of these services. It was these services that built the community we all love, and I think we have all forgotten that. I'm asking the council to focus on our city services like police and fire, and to bring back our minimum staffing levels and our laid-off officers. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Officer Spelman.
My name is Mark Perrin. I live at 320 West Troy. I would like to start by thanking Mayor Covey and Councilwoman Piana for attending the special DDA meeting held at Rosie O'Grady's this past Thursday. Honest, constructive dialogue with city and business owners is what we have been asking for during the last year and a half. I know that the council has requested various reports from the police chief, city attorney, and DDA to be presented in August. I would, I understand that as part of this process, the police are investigating the number of complaints, tickets issued, and other relevant statistics. I would urge the council to understand that complaints regarding violations of the sound ordinance are going to be underrepresentative of the magnitude of the problem. I know for certain that the neighbors of West Troy and West Saratoga have a great respect for the Ferndale police officers and the job they have to do. We only call when we are honestly and truly at our wits' end. For every call we make, there are many, many more that we do not. Next month, when you are listening to the various reports and recommendations, I beg you to remember the residents of Ferndale. The business owners have the DDA. The residents have no such organization to make sure their interests are represented to this council. Please don't forget us. Thank you.
Sherry Wells, 315 West Troy. I'm wearing my downtown Ferndale spruce-up day t-shirt. My daughter and I had done this at least three times. We do care about how the downtown looks to people who visit, and had done, put the sweat equity in to show that. What I want to do tonight, we have, as you know, a petition drive, and in 12 days, under rather adverse circumstances, we will get over 200 signatures, and those signatures are still good for the next at least six months, as I understand it, or five and a half. And I had two people stop me on my way here, because they wanted to sign that petition. I want to read from the state of Michigan Model Noise Ordinance that was drafted by Eric Zwirling, that I think is somewhat familiar to some of you. In 2000, for the Michigan Municipal League, the Declaration of Findings and Policy, whereas noise has been proven to have demonstrable adverse physiological, biochemical, and psychological impacts on humans. Humans, Whereas The Noxious Stimulus Of Noise Has Long Been Used As A Laboratory Model For Producing Stress, Whereas Noise Has Been Clearly Implicated In Sleep Disturbance Resulting In A Cascade Of Negative Effects, Whereas The Stress, Tension, And Fatigue Associated With Long-Term Exposure To Noise Has Destroyed Marriages, Caused People Their Jobs, And Forced Other People To Sell Their Houses At Significant Losses, Whereas There Are Documented Cases Of Assault, Arson, Murder, And Suicide arising From Noise Exposure Or Disputes, Whereas A Substantial Body Of Science And Technology Exists By Which Excessive Sound May Be Substantially Abated, And Whereas The People Have A Right To And Should Be Insured Of An Environment Free From Excessive Sound, Whereas Every Citizen Has A Right To The Peaceful Enjoyment Of Their Private Property And The Usability Of Their Commercial And Industrial Property." And this goes on to say, "Therefore Is The Policy Of," insert jurisdiction, I'd like Ferndale to be in there, "To Prevent Excessive Sound That May Jeopardize The Health, Safety, Or Welfare Of The Citizens, Or Degraded The Quality Of Life." I have observed, in my household and in my neighbors, how this sound is affecting us. We are getting, as Mr. Perrin said, on the edge, and this is not going to make a healthy, safe Ferndale. As Mr. Covey suggested at that Thursday night meeting, perhaps we need to, no perhaps about it. We need the outdoor patios to not have piped-in sound or live sound outdoors. That needs to be kept indoors behind closed doors. A door opens, and it comes down the tunnels of whichever buildings are forming that tunnel into our neighborhoods. So, that is the very first step you can take. Right now, when we, if we submit those petitions, we're going to have to have a special election, and that's going to cost us. And besides the other costs that we're already paying, that's unnecessary. Please do what we elected you for.
Your Honor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may make one correction to Ms. Wells's statements, you have 60 days. That's how long the signatures are good. No signature can be older than 60 days prior to the day you file the petitions with the city clerk's office.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Luke Forrest, 340 West Troy. I'm from the same block on West Troy. Not here to talk about noise tonight. Instead, I'm here to talk, to complain about my tax bill, but maybe not in the way you might think. I paid our taxes for my family last week, like many of my Ferndale neighbors, but I was extremely surprised at how low the bill was, to be quite honest, and particularly the elements dedicated to city general operating. So, I did some quick math today on my way here, and what we paid to this city's general operating fund was approximately 3% of what we paid to the federal government in terms of income tax, approximately 18% of what we paid to the state. I'm not here to debate the efficiency of the federal or state government, but I think, anyway you slice it, that imbalance is pretty severe. And I know, for my family, the services we get from the city are much more important to our day-to-day lives than anything we get on a daily basis from the state or the federal government. We moved here, and this is actually a great follow-up to the police officer who spoke earlier, we moved here not because of the tax rate, we moved here because of the excellent services the city provides. And I know a lot of people are concerned about the reduction in services, and given the constraints that you face, I just want to speak in support of the initiatives you discussed at your last meeting in terms of a millage increase. I know that you're pursuing a lot of efficiencies to try and reduce that need, but I know, given the extreme imbalance between what we pay to the city and what we pay to all these other units of government that we're under, my family would be willing to pay much more than we are now, relatively speaking. We're talking about, right now, less than $1,000 that we're contributing as a family to the city general operating fund, which, given the excellent services we receive, seems like a pittance compared to our federal and state contributions. So, I want to encourage you all to move quickly on this issue. Don't let people forget the fights you've had over the last few months in terms of the budget, and also act decisively, and give us an opportunity to talk this through, because I know there will be significant debate about this issue, but I think everyone can agree that we need to do something. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest.
Hi, Keith Dalton, 3036 Horton. Hello, everybody. I'm here tonight just to remind everybody that election season is upon us, and we all know the state of our country, and our county, and our city, and how important it is for all, everybody in this city, and the state, and the country to get out and vote, get involved. Don't just look at one television station, or one blogger. Do not just take it verbatim that this news station or that news station is telling you the truth. Our country is in quite a quandary, and it's very apparent that somebody has been lying to us for some amount of time, where we wouldn't be in the quandary that we're in. So, please, everybody, get out there and vote. I don't care if you vote Democrat or Republican. These next few election cycles, not just the off-terms, not just the mid-terms, but the presidential elections in the next three or four election cycles are what, and is what is gonna determine the fate and the ability of our country to survive. If we do not turn things around shortly, I don't care if you're conservative, or if we're liberal, we're not gonna have much left to call the great country that we do call ourselves now. So, please, everybody, get more involved, know more about your local and national politics than you do about the American Idol, or who's got talent, and who can dance best. Find more time for your governance, and like I thanked you guys before, thank you for your time, because I know it's a very unthankful job. But, thank you again.
Thank you.
Catherine Hirschberger, 750 West Maplehurst, and you all seen me here before, councilman mayor. We all know that this, as Keith has just said, that this country, and the state, and every city in this state is in a financial crisis, and it's not gonna get better soon. If we see a turnaround in three to five years, we will be ultimately blessed. We need to settle a contract with the unions. The unions need to be able and willing to take some cuts. The city needs to be fair in what those cuts are. In, I've lived here 33 years and 11 months, and I have never refused to vote a millage. But I will not vote for a millage for the police or fire department if a contract is not settled. Settling a contract now has gotta be financially a positive move, because six months from now, you all are going to be looking at another budget that's going to have less money to operate than we had this year, and there's going to have to be more and more cuts. The sooner this union contract is settled, maybe the better off the unions will be, because a year from now there might even be less for them to negotiate against. If you don't have a contract, you don't have my vote for a millage, for anything. And I want to see a contract, I want to see it settled. I know these men work hard, they protect us, they take care of us. But they also have to realize that everybody at that table in their jobs has given up something: healthcare benefits, time off, office space, salary, as I did. I was in the smallest negotiating unit of a union, six people. They locked us in a room, said you have X amount of dollars, you figure out how you're gonna divide it up. We were in that room for six hours to divide a few dollars among six people, but we had to do it. The three oldest seniority people got 75% of it, and the 25, the three lowest got 25%, and that's the way it went. But a union contract will help everybody in this city to be more settled. Please, both sides, come together and negotiate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak tonight during the call to audience?
I'm done there.
You did fine.
Hi, Will Lewis from American Pop, 175 West Nine Mile Road. Unfortunately, there's a couple businesses closing this month, long-term, three in Ferndale, possibly four. And I would encourage any of you council members, I know that you're so busy, and you take your job with you, when you leave this building, just park anytime during the daytime on Nine Mile, and see just what a ghost town it is. And I'm not trying to be negative, but a lot of us, we're just struggling day-to-day. There's days I can't even afford to run my air conditioning. There's just, and then if you do drive a couple miles up to Royal Oak, you see, wow, what is the difference? What do they have that we don't? Why is it a bustling place full of energy? And Chris Hughes does a great job with the presentation, but I'm not hearing anything, any reason why anybody should go into the stores. I'm not seeing any direct tie-ins. We can do as much as you want outside, you can shut down Nine Mile, you can throw bowling balls down the street. Where is the direct marketing to bring people actually into our businesses and spend money? I don't see any direct networking or any reason to go shopping downtown Ferndale. We could really use your help on that. We start the Ferndale council meetings with the Pledge of Legions, and as a store owner, I can't put out a little flower pot with a flag in it. If I was to do so, I can guarantee you that flag would be urinated on, probably stolen overnight. As we talk about the sound ordinance, someone on the blog site said, "Well, we as store owners should be grateful that all these buyers are open late at night and bringing us business." Well, the fact is, it's just bringing drunks who commit vandalism at night, and there's noise levels that go with it. But we talk about laying off police, police presence. We have a great police department, but there really isn't a police presentation, representation, I should say, on Nine Mile Road, only once in a while during special events. And if we're gonna promote our old-fashioned walking district, it would be great if we could see a police officer or work that into a budget, come up with some money somehow. So, we could patrol the streets, at least during the evening, with all our little dark alleys and alcoves, and make it safer for everybody, and to put stuff outside or decorative, and keep the place looking like a very welcoming downtown Ferndale. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tim Benzick. I live at 1581 East Webster. The issue is the police department. I read the last Woodward talk that came out. A police officer was bitten by a woman. That's what these guys have to deal with. And as far as our community is concerned, I mean, they are, they are our community. You reduce them, I mean, you're worried about tax dollars. I tell you what, you take, you take the cops away, you take the boys and the women that support this community and protect us when we need them. Your tax dollars will be going with them too. I promise you that. Then there's the other issue, you know, you've got these guys out there, I don't know whose idea it was to reduce the police officers. You know, this isn't hard for me, but it's, it upsets me that these boys who we expect them to protect us are out there, putting it at risk. We live on the edge of Detroit. I guess it was ranked the third most dangerous city. I mean, we've got Oak Park, a kid was shot down there just for being a Good Samaritan. We've got Royal Oak Township gangs coming from there in Detroit. It's a real problem. And I tell you, if you reduce the police, if you stop supporting them, you know, I understand there are tough issues with having to pay for them. These are extraordinary times, and it really calls for extraordinary measures from each and every one of you. I mean, you gotta beat the band, you gotta get out there. I understand a millage may be something that may be needed, but there are other ways. I mean, if it's just one police officer here or there, you know, I mean, you're gambling. You're gambling with their lives, you know? And I'm not prepared to see one of these draped across someone's coffin, and some widow's suffering, because you guys had a budget problem. You got a job. It's not an easy one. You got a job. Figure it out. That's what you're getting paid for. That's your job. I don't care how it gets done. I'm not interested in excuses. That's what leadership is. It's not having all the answers, it's being accountable. It's an opportunity. This is the triumph of the human spirit, to do something different, to make a difference. And I see my time's up.
Good evening, mayor, council. Patrick Sheehan, Ferndale Firefighters Union. I guess what I'm gonna say tonight just kinda goes along with what the young lady was addressing a few speakers ago. And we were up here, or I was up here not too long ago, and I just kinda asked that, when we were going through these negotiation efforts, that we maintained good faith, and we kept it out of the open forum. And I guess what I'm, I'm gonna do again tonight is just respectfully request again to please cease making comments to the public, that the unions are not making efforts to show concessions, 'cause, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of every labor union in this town, and I won't, but I don't believe that to be the case, that no one's trying to work. I can only speak from our behalf that we have came to the city with concessatory efforts and proposals. And to go back to what the young lady was saying earlier, is we have tried to make effort with wage concessions, we have tried to make an effort with healthcare concessions, we have tried to actually restructure our command staff and how we do that, in order to alleviate some overtime that's created with that. We've, we've made efforts to show that we're willing to restructure our time off, and our, you know, our accrued time through the year to save money. And the bottom line is, when it's all said and done, you know, what we've came up with was about $450,000 in concession offers. Along with these, these offers, it was, some, a lot of these offers are gonna fix things for the future, too. They're gonna be cost-saving measures down the road, not just this year. And we also want to still maintain a level of public safety and protection that the citizens in this community, and Pleasant Ridge, and Royal Oak Township, which we do fire protection and EMS for. We want to maintain the protection that the citizens of these communities have had, and they deserve. And, you know, bottom line is, from our side, your firefighters in this town are just trying to simply come up with a way to maintain a fair and equitable and safe contract. And that's all we're doing, and we're just not there yet, I guess. And we're gonna keep working at it, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I'd just like to add something if everybody else is done. I'm Monica Mills, co-chair of the Ferndale Pub Crawl, and I just wanted to mention a couple things that haven't been mentioned. Let's see here. Our sponsors, which we could not put the event on without them, are Absolute Vodka, Labatt Blue Light, also the Cantina Diablo, Rosie O'Grady's, and Boogie Fever. On a smaller level, also, we have sponsorship from Danny's Irish Pub, The Post Bar, Sneakers, Soho, The Bar Downstairs, Malibu Rum. And for safe transportation to and from the event, also consider our sponsors, The Designate and The Night Moves, which run in between the cities. Also, this event is a fundraiser for Michigan AIDS Coalition, the Ferndale Police Auxiliary, which assists our police officers, the Ferndale Community Foundation, who just gave out all these different grants, and also Fern Care. There's, for more information about the event, questions and answers, www.ferndalepubcrawl.org. And also, we can always use more volunteers, so you can contact me at 248-545-1435, extension 117, or email me through the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mills. That concludes our call to audience tonight. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The consent agenda, Your Honor. Item A, approval of the minutes of the meeting held July 12. B, approval of the agreement with Siemens Industries to provide preventative maintenance and emergency repair services for the HVAC systems in seven city buildings and facilities, and to charge the first-year expense of $42,363 to the Public Improvement Fund. Contractual account number is listed. Item C, approval of ordinance number 1095- Item C, approval of ordinance number 1095, Consumers Energy Franchise Ordinance. Item D, approval of the contract with Olsha, Olssa, sorry, for program year 2010 through 11, and to authorize the mayor to sign the contract, and to direct the city clerk to forward one copy of the signed contract to Olssa with a copy to the community development. E, approval of the Animal Shelter Operation and License Agreement with Wags and Wish's Animal Rescue. Item F, approval of amendment to the Ferndale Royal Oak Township Fire Protection Agreement. Item G, approval of amended contract for grass and weeds. Item H, approval of Police Department Administration Reorganization. Item I, approval of resolution of support for the Smart Millage. Item J, approval of a resolution recognizing the collaborative efforts of the Woodward Five. Item K, approval to retroactively increase Chief Sullivan's salary from five, by 5% from $74,549 to $78,276, effective May 3. To retroactively increase Chief Collins's salary by 5% from $90,007 to $94,507, effective July 1. And provide both with back pay for the difference between these salaries and their actual pay to date. Item L, approval of the bills and payrolls certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to review of the council finance committee. And item N, approval to table indefinitely consideration of fiscal year 2011 auto parking fees.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know Councilman Galloway and I both want to pull item H, item K. Do you want item I?
Item I as well, the millage.
Item E?
And item E. Anything else from the audience or table to pull for further discussion? So we are looking to pull from the consent agenda, E, I, H, and K. Is there a motion to adopt the remaining items?
So moved. Second?
Seconded by Piana, motion by Baker to adopt all of the items except H, K, I, and E. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry. Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon? Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, as well. Thank you. Moving along then, Madam Clerk.
Regular agenda item A, one, appointment of Dan Martin to the Police and Fire Board for a term expiring May 1, 2011. And two, appointment of Francine Hackum to the Special Events Committee.
Thank you. Let's go one at a time. Item one, Dan Martin, who expressed interest some time ago in the Police and Fire Board. He is here tonight. He would be taking the place of Aaron Reddish, who was on the board for a number of years. Aaron has turned in his resignation. So is that a mayoral appointment, Madam Clerk?
I agree.
Well, in any case, our modus operandi here is to always have it, motions made and nominated by council members even for mayoral appointments.
I would move to appoint Dan Martin to the Police and Fire Board for a term expiring May 1, 2011.
Thank you. Motion made, Baker. Is there a second?
Second.
And did we want to do this as one motion with the special events appointment as well?
I guess I wasn't looking that way. They're separate boards, but we could. If there's no objection to that, and does anyone want to hear from Mr. Martin, or you can just wave again? Is there then a motion for Francine Hackum to take a place on the Special Events Committee? It's a group that works on, working with the city staff to bring and make happen the special large events that occur in our city. Are you taking the place of Ann Heller?
Correct.
She would be taking Ann Heller's place, who served on that a long time. Would you make the same motion, Kate, for Francine?
Do we need to vote on the first one before we make the other?
Well, Councilman Galloway suggested we do them both at the same time.
All the proposed action here on our memo just had them listed as. If I wasted more time talking about combining them, trying to...
Well, I'll let it go. Let's, let's move on the Police and Fire Board. We have the motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, that is unanimous, and thanks for your continuing service, Dan. Then the item for Francine Hackum for Special Events?
I would move to appoint Francine Hackum to the Special Events Committee. Sorry, I was looking at the agenda and not the proposed...
That's okay. Support, and is there a term associated with that?
There is not.
You serve as long as you can take it, huh? Did you second that, Scott?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Galloway seconds Baker's motion for Francine to Special Events. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Cobby?
Yes, as well. I didn't see Francine in the audience. The third one is for Ann Yambor to the Beautification Commission for a term expiring the end of this year, December 31st. Is Ann here tonight?
So moved.
Thank you. Seconded by Baker. Galloway makes the motion. Ann Yambor to the Beautification Commission. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Cobby?
Yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you all. Item B?
Regular agenda item B is consideration of the design build team for City Hall Reorganization Project.
I'd like to...
Thanks, Your Honor. I'd be happy to introduce this item. Back in May, the city council adopted a budget that eliminated a third of the clerical workforce here in City Hall. At that time, I presented the city council with a plan for reorganizing City Hall that would allow us to operate more efficiently and more effectively with our smaller staff. We were provided preliminary cost estimates back in April. On May 5, the council directed me to solicit proposals for reorganizing City Hall by eliminating the community development department, or not eliminating it, but moving it all upstairs and putting all employees behind one public service counter and eliminating the current six points of contact that we have. To make a long story short, the City Hall Reorganization Team, which includes myself, the city clerk, community development director, and our assistant city manager, finance director, met with the Daly Company and Myco Construction, who were the two finalists that the council interviewed for the municipal building project. Through meeting with them and receiving proposals, we narrowed it down to the Daly Company and then worked with them to identify a guaranteed maximum price for the project. Guaranteed maximum price of $447,930 is about 12% more than the original estimate, but that's due in large part to the fact that we need to make the lower-level bathroom here in City Hall ADA compliant, which wasn't anticipated originally. And there's also some fire code updates that will need to be done in the outer doors here coming into City Council. So as was alluded to earlier, this new plan would actually install a new ADA compliant lift in the front of City Hall. The current lift in the back of City Hall is not ADA compliant, and as anyone who has used it can tell you, it's not a very pleasant experience to use it. So it would make City Hall both more accessible and more efficient, allow us to operate with a smaller staff and save more money over time. So you have in your, in your packet, the proposed floor plan that the architects at Newman Smith worked with us to create, and the budget that the Daly Company has put together. We have representatives from both firms here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. And at this point, we're looking for some direction as to whether or not to proceed with this project and negotiate an agreement with the Daly Company to execute it.
Thank you for that introduction. I know I do have a question, but do other council members have any requests for information first? Looking through my paperwork here. Then I'll go first, or maybe I'll be the only one. As I perused all of this, I was a little confused because on the June 10 report, or correspondence from the Daly Company, they mentioned some of the items and the understandings of the project and what was going to be done. And under Nine Mile Lobby, modify the structure, new barrier-free lift, provide new floor finishes, possibly provide new public barrier-free toilets, restrooms. Is that what... I'm not sure how you say that you possibly will do something.
Oh, well...
Or is this just...
Well, yeah. The first thing that you should understand is that that June 10 letter was a preliminary letter that we actually worked on the floor plan subsequent to that. The floor plan itself is dated June 30. So during those 20 days, that's when the code review took place and the architect sat down with the city's code official and determined what some of the specific items would have to be done. So that was hashed out subsequent to this, to this June 10 letter. But this June 10 letter is not a contract. You're not being asked to propose that tonight. If the council wants to move ahead with this project, then we would go back and negotiate a more complete contract with the scope of work in it that would include those bathrooms.
Would that result in a higher price?
No. The price estimate that you have in front of you tonight is dated July 2, and it's based on that June 30 floor plan. So we don't anticipate, we've done our best to find all the costs that we can and actually arrive at the guaranteed maximum price. So the Daly Company has provided that guaranteed maximum price. If the project comes in under budget less than that, then it'll be a savings to the city.
All right. Well, that was my main question. So there, there would be creation, installation of a barrier-free accessible restroom, might turn the two into one.
That's correct.
Unisex-type bathroom.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, the only bargaining that would take place would be on non-financial terms and not regarding the scope of the work as described in here, that possibly would become for sure. These other things would be provided, and we'd be talking about non-financial terms and non, I guess, scope-of-work-related terms. Is that correct?
In the agreement?
In whatever we're going to negotiate. Because if we've already agreed to price, there's some ambiguity in the scope of the work. It seems to me that we're bargaining against ourselves in the scope of work. But what I'm hearing you say this evening is that, in fact, the scope of the work and the price have been set, and we're going to get down to non-financial terms and non-scope-of-work terms.
That's correct. We have been working with Daly Company and Newman Smith to very clearly identify the scope of work and the guaranteed maximum price. So now it would be just the formality of putting that together in a contract form.
My question has to do with the exterior of the building, which I know is something that we did not talk about and we specifically told you not to ask about. And I hope that this is something that, as we move forward with a project that makes the front of our building more welcoming and accessible to all of our community, that perhaps we can work on with the DPW and Byron's team, is reapportioning and restriping the barrier-free parking spots that are in their currently positioned near where the lift is, toward the back of the parking lot. It's, it's been mentioned to me several times by, actually, a former neighbor who was up here speaking tonight on a different topic, that as we considered possible changes to our municipal complex, she hoped that we would take parking and accessibility sort of hand in hand. So just a question for you, and perhaps a direction to the DPW department at a later date.
Mm-hmm.
To reapportion and restripe some of those parking spots to put the barrier-free parking where the actual barrier-free entrance is.
Yep, we can do that.
I see that the mayor has stepped out without telling me, all right. Any other requests for information from the council table? I see that we probably have a request for information from the audience.
Real quick, Thomas Gagne, 360 West Woodland. The city manager made a comment that this would save money over time. I'm just curious, A, if there's been calculations and projections on what that return on investment would be. We've, we've cut the staff. We're going to drop $450,000 potentially into these changes. What is that return?
It's about $175,000 a year. So the break-even point on this project's about three years.
So the, knowing that we have another budget crunch next year, I think your estimate was $4 million at least for next year, that, and knowing that this won't pay itself back in, in three years' time. I just want, I'm curious, if council is satisfied that that's a satisfactory return on investment on those expenses?
Well, the alternative is to keep staffing the building we've been, the way we've been staffing it since 1964.
Do we have an estimate, or do you have a number on what the minimum changes that are possible would be? I mean, is it necessary to re-carpet? Is it necessary to repaint? You know, of all the, the extra things, if we were a small company and we were asking our investors, hey, let's spend $450,000, you know, working on our building, I'm sure the investors would say, wait a second, what am I getting for that $450,000? So, I mean, what is the minimum we have to do so that the staff can be, can execute their jobs? Do we have a number for that?
We have, council directed the city manager to look at the most bare-bones thing that he could come up with. So this isn't about putting down nice new carpet or buying new cubicles for everyone. This is about putting up a service desk and a barrier-free entrance.
So... No, it is about buying new carpet and new furniture.
Yeah.
For $450,000, it is. We can't use the same furniture that we have now, most of it switched to circa 1964, in an open bay office area, which is proposed here. So, but I actually like the premise of the second part of your question first, which is if we were a small business, we would have already declared bankruptcy.
True. You've said that before.
Yeah. So we're not a small business. We're a local government. We have to try to continue to provide the service as efficiently and as effectively as we can. We can either keep doing it in this building with a larger staff, or we can spend a one-time cost on making this building more efficiently, making it more efficient, and staff it with a smaller staff. We pre, we came up with three different proposals for reconfiguring City Hall. Back on May 5, the council directed me to get a price estimate on this option, and so that's, that's what we've done. The goal here is to reorganize this building once and then not put a Band-Aid on it that we're going to have to come back and peel off in five years at an even higher cost. This is, it's not a, a best-case solution, but it's a permanent solution. So that if the city can't spend any more money on this building for another 20 or 30 years, what we do today is going to last.
Do you, did you have an estimate for what the bare-bones minimum was?
No, we, we didn't. We had three preliminary cost estimates back in the end of April from Plant Moran Cressa that involved reorganizing City Hall in three different ways. So they had three preliminary cost estimates at that time. The council selected one option to pursue further, and so now we've arrived at a guaranteed maximum price for that solution.
Okay. That's the end of my questions. There's time to make comments later, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So we're still in the phase of requesting information. We could share opinions during the period after a motion is submitted. Any other requests for information from the council table? Then we would look for a motion to carry on the conversation.
I would move that we award the City Hall Reorganization Project to the Daly Company and appropriate $447,930 from the FYE 211 Public Improvement Fund budget.
Second?
Thank you. The motion was made and seconded, Galloway, Piana. I just want to share my thoughts. I'm in support of this mainly because I think it is bare bones. It is the ability to, to make the changes needed to survive this financial crisis, but far short of what was talked about a couple of years ago. You know, ideally, we'd love to renovate the entire building. We'd love to have a new courthouse. Times are very, very tough. But Councilman Lennon, haven't we had on our list of things to do for a number of years, some floor repair upstairs?
Yeah, that goes back to a previous city manager.
Like 10, 10, 15 years ago.
However, Mayor, if I should say, we need to become ADA compliant up there. I'm all for that. It just seems there's going to be a better way. I can't vote for half a million dollars for City Hall Reorganization Project when we just laid off Police and Fire. It's not in good practice for me to do that. It's got to be a better way.
Appreciate your comments there, Councilman. Again, I'm, I'm leaning in favor because the alternative was, was a much, much higher price, but I think sometimes you spend a little money to save a lot of money.
Oh, sure you do.
And I understand your comment.
I think the other thing that's important to note is that this... I think the other thing that's important to note is that this plan entirely clears out the basement here and would facilitate, if it becomes necessary, moving the court over here. And so essentially, you know, it paves the way for that, which very well could be required in the future. And so, you know, we could take that money that's designated for the court that we've saved up and apply it to making modifications down here and have a more compact, more efficient building that further realizes savings for the city. So, you know, this is what, you know, proactive, strategic thinking groups do. And this building can't go on for another 20, 30 years without some changes.
There's no proposed changes, Mr. Brunner, right now to this section of the building, is there? The council's chambers will remain the same?
That's correct. The council chambers would remain the same. I think there would be some code upgrades to the doors. Those doors would need to be fire-rated. It would include basically moving everybody out of the Community Development Department across the hall, and that would become a storage space. It would allow the city clerk to have more storage on-site, which would make their election preparation more efficient. Cable would still be back here behind us where we are now, and I think the Dream Cruise Office would probably move downstairs into a vacant space. And on that side of the hall, as you mentioned before, would be the ADA-compliant bathrooms.
Could that make further room for the Michigan Suburbs Alliance that pays some rent to us?
Well, the Michigan Suburbs Alliance has signed a lease to move to downtown Ferndale above the Pearl Vision on August 1st.
And there was a comment about funds. Is this money then coming from the general fund that could be used for salaries for police and fire?
No, it's coming from the Public Improvement Fund, which is money that the city has saved up over time for these types of capital improvement projects. So it's not going to require any further cuts in the general fund operating budget.
Okay. Any other comments?
Absolutely. Far and away, the biggest piece of this $448,000 is the ADA accessible lift and modifications to this building, which are desperately needed as our population gets older and younger. As we've seen in Ferndale, we have more senior citizens, we have more people with strollers. They're not able to easily get in and out of our building. And as you just heard the chair of our Disability Advisory Committee say, it is not a dignified way to enter your City Hall to essentially have to be asked to come through the back door. And occasionally, I have heard it from several people, get stuck in that lift. It is absolutely not a dignified way to interact with your city. Clearly, my understanding of the reorganization and refurbishing we were doing upstairs was a little bit different than what the city manager bid out. I did understand that we would not be keeping the desks and the aisle space in the middle that we were moving to an open floor plan. So I guess I should have assumed that would have required a few more temporary walls. But I guess I would just ask, and I know that we have the Daly Company and Newman Smith in the room, just to be cognizant, and you've been with us for a while, and I know keeping an eye on what's going on in Ferndale, of the very tight budget situation that we're in. We've been very frugal with what's in our Public Improvement Fund because we've known that we need to make long-term updates that are going to last for as little as possible. And it's not a great position to put you guys in, to say, please help us pinch pennies. But as our project managers, that's what we would be looking for you to help us with, just understanding the situation that our community is in right now.
Mr. Brunner or Sherilyn Tollman, we're also not getting all-new furniture, but a lot of the furniture and items up there are going to be used and reused.
Whatever can be reused will be reused.
So we're not chucking them all?
The department director offices, which are not visible to the public, will likely be used, using what salvageable furniture there is.
All right, so Brunner's not getting a new couch or anything?
Not that I'm aware of. I just got rid of the old couch.
Got rid of the old couch?
No, the biggest cost in new furniture is in the new, what we call the open bay area, where all the clerical staff is going to be sitting. And those are new cubicles because we don't have any of that kind of furniture today. And all these counters and stuff that you see upstairs now are going away and have to be replaced with something. And you brought up the flooring. The reason that we're putting down new carpet is so we don't have to repair the existing terrazzo floors, which is more expensive to repair the terrazzo floors than it is to cover it with carpet. So that was a cost consideration as well.
Any other comments?
I just want to make it clear, or clear for a couple of things. Although the money is in that Public Improvement Fund, is it possible at all that City Council has the capacity to move that money and repurpose it in the future? Or is it locked in that fund and there's never anything you can do with it?
It's not legally restricted funds.
Okay, so it could be used for next year's budget or the year after that or to save people's jobs. I also want to understand, make sure that, I believe that the, our entire Parks and Rec Department's budget this year was about a half million dollars. And so in doing this upgrade, we're basically going to spend the equivalent of our entire Parks and Rec Department, we're going to create a one-year department in spending.
No, the net cost of the Recreation Department to the General Fund is about a quarter of a million dollars because they generate about a quarter million dollars in revenue. So the net cost to the department is about a quarter million dollars.
Okay.
And that's an annual ongoing cost in the General Fund. This is a one-time cost.
One-time cost.
To the Public Improvement Fund.
I also want to take issue with something that Ms. Baker said. The biggest cost in here, as I see it, isn't the ADA compliance or specifically how you do that calculation. I see in the costs here what looks like $60,500 for drywall, acoustic ceilings, doors and hardware. I see that we're spending more money on painting and carpet than we are on the lift. I see that we're spending darn near the value of the lift just in relocation of furniture, moving it twice. And so I'm unsatisfied that we've actually looked at that deeply enough. And even though we are government and we perhaps have been frugal this far, that is not an excuse to stop being frugal, knowing that next year you guys have $4 million hole you need to dig ourselves, help us dig you out of. And certainly, if you're going to be asking for a millage increase, as passionate as people may be about having the unions take greater concessions, I submit that the residents would also be interested that City Council take concessions in its appetite for spending. Thank you.
Does anybody want to respond to that, Mr. Brunner? We're spending more on carpeting than elevators?
Well, the handicap lift line item is $21,500. So there are several line items that are greater than that. The drywall, acoustical ceilings, doors and hardware, that's to put up new walls upstairs for the private offices, electrical, power, fire alarm, lighting, that's all got to be rerouted. So there are some line items that cost more than the lift alone.
Okay, thanks.
I would just like to ask, I'm all about being creative and saving money, and I'm hearing words like vacant space. Is there a reason why council won't demand to incorporate our DDA office within the City Hall and save the taxpayers a lot of money for the private office on Nine Mile Road? Especially when that organization is set up to actually network with you and put on presentations and et cetera. I think it'd be a lot easier to get the job done in the same building with you.
My answer to your question, there's no reason we couldn't.
Is it two grand a month, their office, four grand a month? That's a lot, I think it's quite a lot. I don't know.
I don't think we have the room for them here anymore, certainly not the size office space that they have downtown now. So that was something that the City Council and the DDA Board would have to iron out during the budget process. The budget process basically offers the City Council the one annual opportunity to exert its budgets, its budget authority over the DDA.
We certainly can look at that. We could look at that when we start the next budget in the winter.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This is embarrassing. One, I forgot my notebook. Two, I want to take something that Mr. Galloway said a step further. I think that was an excellent idea, that he said that some of these changes may actually facilitate perhaps relocating the court over here. I would suggest that perhaps council could put its money where its mouth is and direct the city manager to actually say, what are those cost savings? When would it be effective? And use that cost savings to actually help pay for this. Don't say that it just might facilitate something. If you want to do it and it's a good idea, I suggest you do the analysis, figure out what those numbers are, and then come back to residents and say, not only are we going to make these improvements, not only are they semi-permanent and ADA compliant, but we actually are consolidating the municipal buildings for the same cost. Thank you. That's it.
We do have a motion on the table. If there's no other comments, folks are ready to vote. Shall we?
Well, I just wanted to make a few comments. I appreciated everybody's questions so far. They're the same ones that I have, and I share Mr. Lennon's concerns about this money too, the upfront cost. But I go back to the premise that this, we're going to see $125,000 savings a year over three years, and this is going to pay that off. And we need to look at long-term, not just fiscal year 2011. We need to look at 2012, 13, and 14 because if anybody's salty long-term budget planning at the last council session, we know that we have deficits over long-term, not just in the next year. So I see this as a long-term cost savings measure right now for a three-year, four-year period, if not longer. And as a tenant of City Hall through my organization, and we are moving out through the Michigan Suburbs Alliance, I have seen the inefficiencies for six and a half years up there. And so I think there, a lot can be done. And I've also seen our seniors and families with strollers struggle to get in and out of the building. I've helped people up and down the stairs because they're afraid to take our elevator. So I believe these fixes, this plan helps us address those. I would also suggest that the city, for the small space, I know the DDA has larger space requirements than the City Hall can provide, but there are other small nonprofits such as SCORE and other types of organizations that are looking to rent space, and this can be a short-term revenue generator, such as our nonprofit has been as well over the last six and a half years that we've been here. So there are other options to bring in revenue, albeit small, but over the long run, it helps. Every bit helps.
Great points. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else? Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
No, what's the explanation?
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Cuffin?
Yes, Councilman.
Part of me says this really needs to be done. Second to the courthouse, this is a woefully inadequate building, particularly when it comes to ADA compliant. However, like I said, I had to vote with my conscience. That was why I went no.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
We are on the regular agenda item. See consideration of the attorney's report on medical marijuana.
Thank you. Mr. Dan Chris, City Attorney, will you begin this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Council, recall at the June 14th meeting, it elected to impose a three-month moratorium on licensing of medical marijuana facilities to allow for the city an opportunity to study the issue, to determine how best to regulate medical marijuana within the city of Ferndale to protect the city and city health, public safety, and welfare. Since that date, I've had opportunity to meet with the Community Development Department along with the Police Department to discuss various issues associated with medical marijuana and the various types of facilities that are attempting to avail themselves of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. I have also had an opportunity to have a dialogue with a proposed applicant, view that applicant's space, and discuss how that person or that entity would like to make itself a going venture in the city of Ferndale. Additionally, discussions have taken place with the Michigan Department of Community Health regarding their certification process associated with qualified caregivers and qualified patients. I've also had an opportunity to review a number of other regulatory ordinances, both in the city, both in the state of Michigan, as well as study legislative actions across the country, particularly in those states that have already considered legislative actions that address medical marijuana. In the packet of information that you have this evening are several draft ordinance amendments. Three of them address the issue of potential zoning ordinance amendments, one which would define what a medical marijuana facility is and essentially indicate that it would be a primary caregiver and/or qualified patient who's legally registered with the Michigan Department of Community Health, who seeks to lawfully assist qualified patients concerning the medical use of marijuana. That is a definition very comparable to the definition that's set forth in the state act. There's an additional proposed zoning ordinance amendment which would allow for that type of use to be a permitted use in the MXD 2 district, which is in large part along the Hilton corridor. There's also some additional provisions in the zoning map on the western part of the city. And then thirdly, there is a proposed amendment to Section 8.25, which sets forth certain additional requirements for medical marijuana facilities. It addresses issues such as hours of operation. It would propose that any type of use of medical marijuana not be allowed at the facility. It proposes that there would not be any drive-through capabilities for such facilities. It addresses distance requirements as it relates to schools, schools daycares, and child daycare centers. It also raises the issue, although not in the draft that you currently have, of whether or not there should be additional distance restrictions from other medical marijuana facilities. It also makes reference to a facility that wishes to undertake grow operations and identifies additional specific regulations and requirements that that type of business or activity or proposed use would have to comply with, making sure that that type of grow operation would be safe for the workers in the facility, and making sure that any type of discharge from that type of grow operation protect the city of Ferndale and not have any type of illicit discharge into the city's sewer system and require approval both of the MDEQ and the city of Detroit in connection with that type of discharge. There is also a requirement on the proposed signage for such a facility to de-emphasize the word marijuana and prohibit any type of signage which would have the marijuana symbol associated with it. Fourthly, there is a regulatory ordinance that covers a lot of the same issues that is in the proposed amendment to 8.25. That would require a licensing through the city clerk's office and provides additional protections to other businesses in close proximity to a medical marijuana facility. It is of benefit for council's consideration, and the reason, principal reason is because the regulatory ordinance is not, any type of applicant who's already in business is not protected from the regulatory ordinance. They would have to comply with those type of regulatory ordinance provisions, whereas the zoning ordinance, an applicant is grandfathered as a non-conforming use, not subject to the zoning ordinance amendments that come after their initiation of a use. So that's what is before you this evening. The proposed recommendation, which I have prepared for council, because of the zoning ordinance amendments, which require consideration by the ordinance amendments, which require consideration by the planning commission, would be for council, if it elects, to refer the matter to the planning commission for its review to make sure that the planning commission also has an opportunity to weigh in on this issue and report back to council with respect to its recommendations. It seems to make most sense to keep both the zoning ordinance and the regulatory ordinance together prior to council taking any action on this matter. As I indicated initially, the moratorium was passed on June 14. I know the next planning commission meeting is August 19, so there's a possibility still for council action, well within the timeframe of the moratorium that it passed back in June.
Well, Mr. Chris, first of all, may I just thank you for a huge amount of work and well done. I think it seems to me that you've addressed almost every issue or all the issues that were brought up, and it is a tough subject. If I'm understanding you and also having read all of the information that you gave us, you've got proposed zoning changes, proposed regulatory issues, including distance from facilities, distance from another marijuana facility, you've addressed signage, but that you recommend at this point that we, as a council, that it's necessary for this to go to the planning commission for their input.
Well, just to clarify that issue, any type of amendment to the zoning ordinance requires under the Zoning Enabling Act that it be, that a public hearing be scheduled and that the planning commission have an opportunity to listen to residents who may wish to, or businesses for that matter, that may wish to weigh in on any type of zoning ordinance amendment. And the planning commission would be required to provide a report back to this body with a recommendation, and then council would have the prerogative to adopt its recommendations or not.
Okay. And I appreciate, again, looking at the timeline, I mean, I don't know that there's anything magical about the 90 days that was ago. But it seems to me like we're making a lot of progress, that the next step is to go to the planning commission, that this is probably a good time for council members to share their thoughts either now or with, or with planning commission members, or at least to be prepared so that we can move forward and maybe, even reach that 90-day deadline. Councilwoman, Piana?
Well, I had always hoped that we would come in under the 90-day deadline. Want to be clear, I think everybody up on council wants these types of businesses in Ferndale. We never said that we didn't want them. We are welcoming and see that as a great benefit to promoting economic development in our community. And I really do appreciate the work that you've put into this. I've done my research, too. The city of Berkeley and the city of LA are leading these medical marijuana ordinances, and so thank you for researching that and connecting to those cities and the city clerk to get their, to get their copies and really producing a solid draft in which the planning commission can work from. I think this is a great step in the right direction that addresses everybody's concerns, police, planning, fire, and as well as protecting the business owners as well, because that's what I've learned through this whole thing and the research that I've done, is that business owners can have issues of safety as well, and this is about protecting them too.
If I can share, too, that nothing in the new state laws or in any of these items allows or permits public use or use by patients of marijuana product in any type of cafe, restaurant, store.
Well, the way the state law reads is there shall not be any, I'm going to read it for you, Your Honor. It prohibits the medical use of marijuana, smoking of marijuana in any public place is the way the provision reads, along with other, certain other areas that are precluded from use, but it indicates smoking of marijuana on any form of public transportation or in any public place is prohibited.
Okay. So that does leave, and I only brought it up because there are requests, and we might have to deal with it on a different, a different time, but it seems like there are folks interested in cafes and either private clubs or restaurants that turn into something different. And I suspect maybe they're talking about cooking and/or imbibing through brownies or cookies or whatever it is folks use. So is that something we need to think about and address at some point in the future as well?
Well, I think, well, it is addressed in the draft. The draft would provide that, that use of the medical marijuana would not be allowed at the medical marijuana facility. Now, that's certainly an issue that can be further explored by the planning commission and this body, but the draft would be that it would not be allowed to be used at that facility.
But the law deals with smoking, like smoking of anything, tobacco or...
The state law says smoking.
Okay. All right. Anyone else, thoughts? Is there consensus, then, to send these on to the planning commission?
Yes.
A motion to such would be appreciated.
I would move that we refer the proposed ordinances prepared by the city attorney undercover of July 21, 2010, to the planning commission for further review and consideration with a general expression from city council of approval of the ordinances drafted.
And a desire to come back to us maybe in by August, late August.
As soon as possible, yeah.
Well done. Thank you. Any second to that motion?
Second.
There is a second?
Thank you. Any further discussion?
All right, Madam Clerk. Motion was made and seconded. Galloway, Piana?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Good.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Cuffin?
Yes, thank you for that. We'll move on to the next item.
This is a regular agenda item D, consideration of petitions to repeal ordinance number 1094, which council adopted and was published June 18, became effective upon that publication. This ordinance places the police and fire departments and the city clerk's office and the city attorney under the supervision, direction, and control of the city manager. The petition was filed with my office on July 15. It had the requisite number of ballot signatures. They've been verified. Therefore, ordinance 1094 is suspended from operation, and council, per charter, must reconsider ordinance 1094. If council does not entirely repeal the ordinance, then the council shall submit the question of whether or not it shall become effective to a vote of the electors at the November general election. And the operation of ordinance 1094 cannot be restored without vote or approval at this point.
Okay. So that ordinance is, in effect, repealed for now?
For now, yes.
Based on the petitions?
That's correct.
This means we are back to the original charter system of us being five at the table managing our five appointees and tonight's issue, then. Was there any further introduction, Mr. Brunner, you wanted to do?
No, I don't, I don't have anything additional, Your Honor.
Then it would be up to council to make some decisions tonight as to either allow this to go on to the ballot, as is. We have the choice ourselves tonight to repeal our original ordinance, or perhaps there's other options as well.
Your Honor, I would move that we repeal ordinance number 1094 and direct the city attorney to come up with language to amend the city charter in a way timely for this November's election to effectuate the supervision of the appointees on a day-to-day basis by the city manager.
Support.
Okay. Well, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Galloway and Baker, that goes right to the issue. And just for the folks in the audience and also watching at home, Councilman, this, this proposal, then, is to, we go ahead and repeal what we did, correct? We agree and allow for the voters to make their choice on the issue, but rather than, rather than voting on the repeal, which we would do tonight, we simply accept to go back to the original way we were, but that we asked, we ask for a charter amendment to go on the ballot.
Yeah. If I could, just, the way I understood the motion, Your Honor, would be that the ordinance 1094 would be repealed and that a council, a proposed resolution would be brought back for you as soon as possible, which would place the question before voters at this coming November. But you would have to actually pass that resolution to have the charter amendment studied and reviewed by, both by the Attorney General and the governor, as provided under the...
But in the meantime, the ordinance is repealed.
It's suspended now. It would be repealed should the motion pass.
Correct. So that the folks who pass the petitions would get what they wanted, but we still would have the option of putting before the voters a charter change.
Correct.
If passed. And is that a 51, 50 vote, 50% plus one vote?
Correct. It's a majority.
And Madam Clerk, is the timeline, not that it's critical, but I mean, is this something could be done for the November election?
It could be done for the November election if council would adopt a resolution at the, it's August 9 meeting that approves ballot language. We would then have two weeks to get the governor and attorney general to approve that language in order to certify it to the county clerk by the deadline of August 24.
So it's doable, but it's tight?
It's tight.
And in the worst-case scenario, we live with our original system for some more time and get it on the ballot at some point?
That's correct.
Should we, should a council decide to do that? Am I explaining that correctly to everyone's satisfaction? So there is a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Hi there. Tiffany Gagne, thanks, mayor and council. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I just wanted to let you know that this effort gathered many individuals together, some for the very first time, not only signing a petition, but contacting us and saying, how do I circulate? As you know, this takes a lot of time and effort, and I am actually very proud of all the folks who stepped up, and you should be, too, because to gather 400 signatures in 22 days is quite an effort and a feat. And I would hope that this mayor and council recognize that the residents have spoken on this issue, and we are asking that you please listen to us. And like I said, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mrs. Gagne.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gagne. Yeah, it was, I, we all got copies of the petitions, and it certainly is a broad-based snapshot of the community from all segments, all sections of town, all streets, east, west, north, and south. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, on this specific issue, my name is Tim Benzick, 1581 East Webster. You know, I, I think back to the founding fathers of this community, and I think there was a reason why they did what they did, and that was for community participation. All of you probably were intended to be involved in not passing it on to someone else to monitor or oversee for you. You were all meant to be active in that. I read in the paper that Bob Brunner said, well, I really don't know what the big deal is, something to the effect, I'm paraphrasing, we should be more concerned with the city budget. Well, when I was a little boy, my mother told me, don't go into her purse and get money without asking her first. And you, Mr. Mayor, with most of the council, except Mr. Lennon, and, you know, you went into that purse without asking us first. And now you want to put Bob Brunner, the man in charge of all these people, and he thinks it's no big deal to go into the purse. You know, I tend to worry. I mean, that seems to me, a man who has a lack of a properly-formed conscience. I know better. You know better.
I want to ask again, that we always, that we don't get personal. Just go ahead and make your point with the guard.
Well, I made my point. You know, you went ahead and asked us without, you went ahead and did something without asking us. And that's the point. I mean, for you to think that you know better, to manipulate us, to propel us towards a goal which you see fit and the rest of us may not, basically denies us our human essence. It treats us like we're objects without wills of our own. And then, in essence, you degrade us.
I'm going to ask you to go ahead and finish your statement.
Thank you.
Because we are exactly, we're exactly doing what, what you all want. We're going to put it before the voters. But I really don't think we need to get personal and talk about individuals and what their motivation.
No, no, no. Question answered.
You're out of order by not speaking when recognized, okay?
That's what the police department's for. If you're there, you have, you should do yours. You know, oversight, they don't need oversight. You do.
All right. Thank you. Any comments? We have a motion and a second. And now would be the time, if anyone wishes to make any comments. If not, Madam Clerk, does anyone need this explained, or we got it? Madam, or Councilwoman, Piana?
I would like to make a comment. We are sending this to the ballot because I think this is one of the most strategic changes that we can make as a city and as a local government. And it's strategic because it helps the appointees, it helps city staff streamline and make timely decisions. And we have said that appointees only have two months, or two, twice a month, out of twice a month to seek feedback and direction, approval by council, discuss any issue that they want. And I think this, this reporting structure is important for where we want to go in the next fiscal year 2012, '13. It also helps us communicate better internally and externally between departments and external agencies that we work with outside of the city. It gives us confidence, especially to our neighboring cities and other agencies who seek to collaborate and consolidate services with us, in particular, fire and police, if that ever came to pass. In particular, other cities know that they have confidence working with our city manager and that that's the go-to person to work with these particular agencies. Which is why I support sending this to the ballot. This is so many strategic things that we need to do differently. The status quo here isn't the approach forward, and which is why I'm demonstrating leadership and why I'm asking the citizens to support this change. It is a policy change. It is administrative change, and while most people aren't, won't be affected by it, other than the appointees, and I think, I think it's the right thing to do and it's the right time to do it, which is why I support, why I support this. And I ask our citizens to support this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I appreciate the, what I look at as a compromise that came from the council just in the last few days that allows us to express where we come from and why we voted and made the decisions, but also ultimately goes back to the voters and goes back in a positive way so that eventually this charter change, which is a change of the charter, should satisfy all sides, that both folks who'd like to change it, which many of us here still do, and those who'd like to keep it the same, will have their opportunity and can vote yes, yes to change, I suspect, or no to keep the charter the same. But it recognizes the work of the petitioners. It still recognizes and validates what council wanted to do. I do want to share, the reason I got a little strong with, with the previous speaker is that I don't like it when individuals' integrity is challenged, and so, and the whole concept, the metaphor of going into mother's purse and taking money, I didn't see that at all. And so I was not pleased with that particular metaphor.
I just wanted to add quickly, Ms. Piana, we appreciate your comments as to the reasons that you stand behind why you voted the way you did. I think a lot of the sentiment from the folks who signed this petition were that we didn't hear the reasons why this council did this, and I would like to respectfully say that we, the citizens, are sending this to the ballot, because otherwise, it was a done deal. And the citizens have spoken, and I appreciate your reasoning, and I would like this council and mayor to spend some time discussing this before November so we know why. I have found, and I've had folks who were circulating these petitions, who said a lot of the folks are not necessarily adverse to a city manager handling this duty. It's the way it was done. It's the fact that we don't know why it was done. And so I think that the duty is to let the citizens know how exactly this is the best way to do it and convince us all and make us feel at ease with this decision. So I appreciate you letting us know. with this decision. So I appreciate you letting us know right now, and I hope that everybody spends a little more time in the future before this goes on the November, is it second, third, ballot. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tiffany. Again, the voters, the voters will make their decision known November, whatever it is.
Second.
November second of two thousand ten. And, and there will be committees, and folks can, can work on it, and I will be working, I'll join the group that is working to promote the change to the charter. Yes, ma'am?
Kay Watson, thirty-two oh-nine Enman, I would just like to make a comment particularly to Ms. Piana. While she's trying to explain to us why they think this is going to work, we've had many councils and mayors here for years, and it has worked. We talk about following other communities. I don't see other communities doing so great, and if our system works, why change it? One of the big problems with this, some of them claim that you're here, what, twice a month? You knew that when you applied for it. When you wanted to be elected to this position, you knew your responsibility. Right now, when you want to go with the city manager in charge, it's the problem there. When council does something that people don't like, we can recall you. The city manager would be untouchable for the simple reason council appoints him. He's in charge of budgets. We just saw how you handled our budget. The cuts that you made, you're telling us too that we're still going to have a deficit next time, and yet we're still incurring costs. There's no end to this, and he will be allowed to get into everybody's budgets and make more cuts. And if we're unhappy and he's affected the safety of the community, we're stuck. We want a council, just like we have it, with them accountable, and if you don't want to be accountable, you do know where the door is.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Jim O'Donnell, thirteen twenty-six West Haleshurst. I was, I'm one of the people that signed the petition. I don't share, on the merits of the case, I don't think I share the same sentiments as a couple of the speakers, but I just wanted to, to share Ms. Piana's comments about where, you know, this form of government should be. The city manager should be responsible for overseeing people. The council, as I understand it, is not giving up, under the proposed ordinance or charter amendment, is not giving up the authority to appoint the chief of police or the fire chief. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? So, I just think, in the era that we're in, where there's a lot of suspicion of, of government and, and things happening too quickly, that a lot of people just wanted to see the process slowed down, and, and the action that you're taking today makes a lot of sense, and we want the issues aired, aired out. And I think the way the council and the city manager handled the budget process in this past year, and, you know, we're going to be doing the same thing next year, actually was constructive, because there were a large number of hearings that were held, you know, throughout the first four months, five months of the year, where everybody, you know, had access to the information and had an opportunity to come and discuss in great detail the budgets that we had. And I just would like that same opportunity for a, a topic that I think a lot of people have strong feelings about, and it's important to, to hear those feelings and, you know, make an informed decision, and hopefully we can have community forums. Citizens for Affair, Ferndale's been very good about providing an opportunity to explore issues before elections, and I, I hope that they host a similar forum for this topic this fall.
Thank you for your thoughts, Mr. O'Donnell. Not seeing any more comments, then are we okay to go to the motion, Madam Clerk? The motion again is, please?
The motion is to repeal ordinance ten ninety-four in its entirety and to direct the city attorney to draft language for a charter amendment for council's consideration at its August ninth meeting.
Put it on the election, on, on.
That would affect the same changes.
In a proactive manner, to change the charter. Madam Clerk?
Council members, I can't remember where I left off last time.
Well, there's Piana.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes unanimously. The, the ordinance is repealed, and it will go on the ballot. Next item, Madam Clerk.
This would be consideration of appointee oversight procedures.
All right, I just want to share that I was not able to find them in my packet, but would you, who's going to introduce this?
It's actually Councilman Lennon that requested, or, I'm sorry, Galloway that requested this.
Galloway, do you wish to introduce this item?
Sure. I've been up here for eight years. Craig, you've been up here for eleven?
Nine for you.
Nine, nine, eleven. They all start to run together. I would agree with some of the speakers, previously, who said that the system worked okay for a while, and as long as budgets were increasing, as long as, you know, departments essentially weren't put in competition with one another for city dollars, the oversight mechanism of a very loosely, you know, loose oversight by the city council with department heads essentially running their own show with little feedback or, or information from the council worked okay. But as times have gotten tougher and challenges to the city have gotten greater, the system really broke down, I think, over the course of the last budget talks, where we had to make some very challenging decisions. We saw repeatedly information not provided or not provided in a timely way by different departments, departments arguing for their own budget at the expense of others without really looking at the entire picture that we have to face up here, and with frankly accountability issues with some of the department heads, pointing fingers at somebody else, saying that person was supposed to, to do something, "That's not my job." And at this point, when we're getting into several budget cycles that are going to be as tough or tougher than the previous one, that's not a luxury that we can any longer afford. We need to get all the appointees rowing in one direction, so to speak, and we need to know, or our partners with other municipalities need to know, that we speak with one voice, and that when someone goes to talk to them to negotiate a intergovernmental service sharing agreement, that that person actually speaks for the city. So toward that end, I think we need to, as this responsibility comes back to council, as we've got new appointees in place, I think it's time to tighten up our procedures a little bit. And toward that end, I've prepared a little bit of a memo here to accompany Agenda Item Seventy that addresses the things that I'm concerned with. As I run my small business, basically, I'm worried about personnel, where we are with our core mission of providing legal services to our clients, and how we're doing with our budgeting. And so that's what I've drafted here, and I would suggest that we need to have regular reports from the department heads, from the appointees, on the performance of their core mission. For example, policing the streets. Chief Collins recently came up with the, the Clemis data, which I think goes right to it, very helpful to show how crime is at really almost historic lows within the city. We need to have feedback from our appointees regarding what actions they've taken to achieve council-established goals and objectives. We've historically done that over the last several budget cycles in our December strategic planning session, and we need to have that regular feedback. We need to have a better understanding of what human resources issues are taking place within the department, what human resources issues may occur or be in place for the appointee themselves, and more real-time departmental budgeting with both monthly reports on expenditures and, and revenues and year-to-date numbers. Also, we need to get a better grip on what our appointees are, you know, when they're going to be around. We're not in the office every day. I can't see if one of the appointees comes in that day or not. I think we should consider council approval of appointee vacation time, sick leave and expense reports. Those would seem to be very basic things for us to oversee. And finally, I think we need to make sure that the appointees, there's some concern raised by one of the union presidents that the appointees, you know, have enough contact with city council so that we can make timely reports and have that feedback both ways. And so I would suggest that at every single regular and special council meeting, whether that deals with their department or not, that the appointee be in attendance and provide, you know, what's been going on since the last time we all met. So those are some of my ideas. I'm open to additional ones or, you know, modifications of some of the things I presented, but I think what I've outlined is a very basic level of oversight of the appointees, and I think the heightened reporting requirements are a necessity out of the fact that we're only in this building sometimes two, maybe three times a week when it's non-budget season, meeting as a body. And since we only manage as a body, it's not the mayor or me or Councilman Lennon directing the appointees, we can only meet as a body and only, you know, provide that direction as a body. So the appointees need to take advantage of that every time, chance they get, and that's why the requirement for regular attendance.
Counselman, you make some good points, and something similar to what the city manager gives us every Friday, you know, a weekly report, I'm open to that. But your memo indicates, point you describing what they are doing on an hourly basis, I, I certainly don't need that. I don't need, if you want to contact me, contact me by email. I don't need more paper. I don't need to know what, I mean, the police department, fire department really don't know what they're doing on an hourly basis. I mean, there's no set agenda. And approval of vacation time, I'm open to that, but you can't approve sick time because nobody really knows when they're going to get sick. I mean, so.
Well, that's true, but, you know, with my, with my employees, if they don't show up for three or four days, I usually get some explanation for why they're sick.
Well, there's some rules. If I didn't show up in the police department for three or four days, guess what, I would have retired.
But we don't hear about that. I haven't heard about any of the appointees being sick ever.
And human resource issues, I'm all for that, but I don't like them to be discussed out in open forum.
But.
Here's my thought, and I, Councilman, I know you put some time and effort into this, and it, I think this demonstrates the frustration that we have, in that we, we are to oversee and supervise five appointees. We've explained that we only meet two, three, four times a month, and that no individual, it's not up to me to oversee the police chief or the fire chief or Councilwoman Piana, but only the group as a five. And so that, that explains some of the frustration that we had in the past, in my eleven years up here. But what I look at this, Councilman, is as a, as you said, a memo, something to begin with, something to work on. I might soften, I hate hourly reports. Somebody once asked me to do an hour, hourly report on what I do, and I didn't like it at all. But I would propose, after some more discussion, that maybe each of the five council members take the councilman's memo, just make a few thoughts like you did, to tweak it a little. Maybe you might reduce a little bit about the hourly thing, and maybe we would include some of this stuff. But then come up with an actual working document. Remember that this work, not only does it make the chiefs and the department heads do a whole lot more work, it makes us do a whole lot more work, too. So suddenly, we're all working harder, even though we're still trying to do our jobs. And again, I think that demonstrates why we were looking at this change. Councilwoman, did you want to share something? I heard you start to speak.
Well, I wanted to say, I think Scott's memo is trying to get to the heart of the issue, and while I, I think the hourly approach is a little difficult to do and a little excessive, and I would hate to do it, too. I'm required to do time sheets at work. It's my own job, and it's a chore. And so I, I think that is something that I would like to scratch off there. But, you know, the city manager does do a weekly report to council in our packets, and I think that is an appropriate, to me, a starting point, at least for reporting. But I think the bigger issue is about roles and responsibilities. We need to talk about our, what are appointees, what do we want them to do, how do we want them to approach their job differently going forward, to help us deal with some of these challenges fiscally and organizationally as we have reduced staffing levels. Requires some new ways of thinking and requires a new way of solving problems, and I think that conversation needs to be had. And I agree with the mayor about, you know, getting a draft going about roles and responsibilities, and I think that's where the starting point, that's a starting point for, for me.
But I suspect there is consensus that we want immediately weekly written reports by email or written to, from all five.
I would suggest that the appointees put their weekly reports in, in the weekly packet that is delivered to council every week. So that is this delivery system that has been working.
Further, further discussion and adding to this and getting.
Right.
Additional framework.
Well, and I'd also say department budget. I've never really seen a department budget other than through the budgeting process. So if they are reporting to us, and we do have supervisory responsibilities, then we should be seeing their budget.
Monthly.
A monthly budget, to make sure what they're doing, so that we can be a conduit to the city manager. So, and I guess that kind of goes on now. A little unclear about how consistent that is, but.
But you're right, we need to, we need to know that on a monthly basis, to find out where we're at and how we're doing, and then feed it into the yearly process. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I believe we've, we've already talked about getting quarterly overall income and expenditure updates, and the city manager put together a template that's updatable. And one of the things that, that Councilman Lennon mentioned was the, the HR oversight piece of all of this. And that's the thing that I've always found the most frustrating about our position up here, is that we do have to discuss sometimes sensitive things, you know, the five of us in public, and it affects someone's job, and unfortunately, sometimes that means that things go unsaid or unaddressed. And I think that that needs to stop. We've got new chiefs that will be coming in in two departments. This, I think, is exactly the perfect time to set up some new structures that then hopefully will continue forward in the spirit of collaboration that is, you know, we're hoping to foster as we move into the next budget process, and then perhaps into a new oversight structure.
Well, let's see if we can get some consensus that we, we're going to ask immediately for weekly reports from, from, from our appointees, that we are going to give our comments and ask the city manager to be the conduit for the comments, starting with this as a template, and our proposed changes, and we can come with some sort of overall consensus. But, and ask also, I think, the city attorney to tell us how we go about in terms of supervisory, supervisory actions with regards to problems or, or disciplinary issues, because that is a very sensitive issue that I deal with at my job or work also, having supervising employees, and yet knowing that has to be confidential, at least in my job, my work. Personnel files are strictly confidential, but we are governed also by the Open Meetings Act, so we can get some advice from the attorney on that.
The only comment I got to make, and take no offense, if they impair something for us, there's cost to us.
True.
You know.
Well, again.
Just take that into consideration when you're asking them to do something.
A cost associated with the five of us having to supervise the five appointees.
Well, I know, I just, just let it.
You're right, there are costs.
Just a couple of comments. You know, we, the two interim chiefs have been getting up to speed. It's a lot to learn, and it's a steep learning curve, I suspect. But, you know, we just haven't, we haven't heard from them in a written manner like we used to on the fire wire and the chiefs' notes. And, you know, we, we need to get that feedback, and we need to get it going quickly. And, you know, I guess what I'm looking for is something in addition to this very high level, you know, you know, Mrs. Smith wrote a nice letter in to us today and complimented so-and-so, or, you know, some initiative at the county level. We need to have, I think, these five items as a minimum detailed for us on a weekly basis, and that is, you know, performance of the core mission of the department, actions taken toward council-established goals, human resources issues, and budgeting issues. Those would seem basic to me. And as for, you know, the hourly thing, I've been tracking my time in six-minute intervals for fifteen years, and if I could only track them in one-hour increments, that would free up a lot of time for me. So, you know, it could be done, and I understand perhaps that's a big leap to start off with, but I certainly, we need to get a better sense of what these appointees are doing on a regular on a regular basis to achieve the things that we've tasked them with, which is coming in under budget, managing their human resources, and, you know, their core mission.
Okay. Very good. Well, again, I'm gonna ask council members to funnel their thoughts to the city manager. Six-minute intervals, every six minutes I'd be saying, I'm finishing my six-minute interval comment.
Some things take more than six minutes.
You get billed for six minutes, right?
I bill intensive hours, yeah.
All right. So if I'm on Facebook for six minutes, I don't make any money, do I?
Councilman, you want us to get back to you with our ideas?
Yes.
In this forum?
Through, if you would, through the councilman and also the city mayor. All right, we'll ask him to do the work to consolidate this.
Yeah, so.
Anything else?
Um, just a few things I would like to throw out there. I said it, I think, at my first or second meeting when I took my seat, that I do support performance measurement, and it's a cultural shift in the city in order to get to that type of management reporting, and I think this is a good step, but some things that I would like to see down the road, which we will be interviewing, I think, our provisional fire chief and our provisional police chief about their, their new roles with the city, looking at analysis of service loads and performance, you know, some other types of things that I've learned about, about hourly specifics and call types and priorities. I think we do that, but, you know, we're trying to make good decisions as, using the information that we have based off of what's happening in these departments. And so I think those are the types of analyses as I would like to see, and of course, Chief Collins, you've already started that, so I thank you. So it's, we have further to go down that path and learn about performance measurement as a way to make some progress in the city. So I think that's where I would like to see us go. I'd also like to see, what I've done my research on, I do a lot of research, a strategic plan for the police department and fire department. I've seen other cities have them, they're not long documents, they're four or five pages, but they state the goals, the missions, what they're going to be working on over the couple of years. So I think that's something that I would like to see as well.
Excellent. Let's put that in this document then. Thank you, Councilwoman. If there's no other comments, then I don't think any action is taken needed, we can move on.
Mayor, is there, is there a motion?
No.
So there's no motion, is there an opportunity for comments, or is that out of order?
Only if you really feel your need to.
Yeah.
Because we're moving on to the next topic.
Very briefly, let me just suggest that I would like council to remember that you're managing a corporation, not a fast food restaurant. The appointees that you appoint are professionals, you might think of them as more as white-collar people than as clerk typists and/or someone who you need to track hourly. I think you should think yourselves more of a board of directors of a large corporation. The board doesn't, doesn't have all their people coming in all the time, and this might feed into why you want a CEO to be in charge. But as you're planning on the things that you would like to have reported to you, that you think first about what the strategic objectives are, and before you start having your appointees reporting to you just about activities, that you guys have the responsibility to come up with what those goals and objectives are, and then when you go to manage them, that you manage them as, as a board of directors, not as micromanagers trying to make sure that they're counting their calories at lunchtime.
Well, you know, Tom, that was exactly what we did with 1094, and what we're proposing to do with the charter ordinance, and through your request that we repeal that, you've asked that we do just the very thing that, that you do, that you just criticized, so there's a real disconnect there.
No, indeed, what we criticized was that when you passed 1094, you didn't justify what you were doing. You spent, and I timed it, you spent less than four minutes justifying it, and at least half of it was a duplication of the first comments, that themselves weren't that deep. So since 1094 passed and it hit the papers, there was finally some conversation about why it was there. Even tonight, we've heard that it's more efficient, but no one has said how it is more efficient. I'm just suggesting that if you are, if this is the blueprint that you will use for the city manager to manage your appointees, that you approach it more from as a board of directors, looking at professionals and what objectives you have for them in the corporation, rather than as.
We hear you, I appreciate it, Mr. Galloway.
Drive-through window folks.
And there'll be plenty of time to discuss the pros and cons of the issue, but we don't have a CEO, so we have to manage all, all of our, our CEO cannot manage our appointees, we have to do that. So we're, we're struggling to find a system to do that. Let's move on, Madam Clerk, to the next item.
That brings us back to consent agenda item 6E, the animal shelter operation and license agreement with Wags &amp; Wishes.
Who can introduce this? Yes, sir, Mr. C.
Your honor, I'd be happy to introduce this item. This is a proposed agreement with Wags &amp; Wishes to provide for animal shelter services and a license agreement for the utilization of the current animal control shelter. There is one proposed change in discussing the draft of the amendment that's included in your material. In section 1.3, there's a reference to the removal of a freezer. I had an opportunity to discuss that issue with the chief, he suggested there is a reason why that freezer is currently in the facility, which needs to remain for the servicing and holding of any dead animals that may be tendered to the shelter. So I would propose that in section 1.3, the reference to the freezer being removed be deleted. This draft, I believe, has been approved by Ms. Potter on behalf of Wags &amp; Wishes, and if there's any questions, certainly I'll be happy to answer them.
Let's go with whoever pulled the item and see what questions they had.
I, I pulled the item, and I wanted to talk, sort of, two different things. One is the, the actual contract positions itself, and then talk about how does the service change for our residents. This contract, I think, is a great solution, it's an innovative solution to managing our animal shelter, but it is for domestic animals only. And can you give us, Mr. Bruner or Mr. Chris, an update where we are in addressing the other half of our animal control service?
Requirements?
For, yeah, requirements.
Part which other half?
The non-domestic. So the Wags &amp; Wishes is helping support the domestic animal, cats, dogs, lost, what did I say, lost, homeless, strays issue when people call the city, I think they call the police department. So that process is still in place, but what happens with their non-domestic animals?
People who have problems with wild animals need to contact a private animal control contractor.
What about the elephant and stray, you know, zebra and all that kind of stuff? What do we do?
We'll call it the zoo.
What about the road cattle?
The what?
The dead animals.
The dead animals?
The removal of dead animals from, from public property, and I imagine you're going to say it's just not going to happen.
Well, and there is more to it, it's not as simple as calling, you know, it's, there's, the person that has a raccoon in their attic, but there's also a person that might see a coyote running down the street, or a wild dog, or a dog frothing at the mouth, or a rabid skunk. So they're gonna call the police?
Yeah, and I, I think Chief Collins can speak to this a little better than I can, but a dangerous animal, regardless if it's domestic, wild, or otherwise, call the police, and the police will respond accordingly.
That's correct. If there is a, if there is a dangerous animal, the police department is still responding. If there's a dead animal on city property during business hours during the week, the DPW is giving us a hand in picking those up. On the weekend, provided the police department is taking care of that issue. But wild animals, folks are being directed, unless it's an immediate endangerment to the public, are being directed to private contractors.
Okay, and for the current strays, lost, and homeless animals, do they still contact the same number, or do they contact the police department?
If they do conduit, we are becoming a conduit for Wags &amp; Wishes, we are sending that, those requests to them, and, but we will still, I'm sure we'll still receive those calls, even if we get the word out, we'll still receive them from time to time.
Well, chief, on the wild animal issue, if we see a, I don't know, maybe a more realistic, a deer running down pine crests.
That's something that we would respond to.
Okay.
But, and we would respond as best that we could, but we no longer have chemical capture, we don't have that ability to do, we, you know, we may try to, to move it on if, if at all possible. Luckily, that doesn't happen all that often, but we would respond to something like that because it's a public safety issue.
So we would try.
But when we get to the wild animals, what we're talking about is the chronic type things, like the city manager mentioned, if you had possums in your trash cans, raccoons, you know, in, in your attic and that type of thing, bats in your house, typically those are animal control issues that would have to be handled by a private contractor at the resident's expense.
And what about the wild, you know, packs of wild dogs that get into the city from time to time? How, what's the residence's response?
Really not aware of packs of wild dogs that come into the city, but if we did have a pack of wild.
I've been confronted by two in the last three years.
But if we did, we would, if it was, if it was a safety issue, we would, of course, respond. We may not be successful in capturing the animals, but we may be able to send them on their way.
Thanks, chief.
I'd like to go into the second half. Am I questioning now?
Go ahead.
Mayor, and this is about the contract part. Specifically, the contract states that the volunteers and staff of Wags &amp; Wishes have access to the DPWR for twenty-four, three hundred and sixty-five days, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And then it says the animal shelter is open to the residents, and I was wondering if we had determined the hours open to residents, is that still under consideration?
Yes, that, that, the actual hours that they would be open to the residents is a matter that may change from time to time, and it would be supplemented by a letter agreement between Wags &amp; Wishes.
Okay, so residents just can't come back on the door, let me in, I wanna look at your dogs, type of thing?
Uh, well, that, that's not fleshed out.
Okay.
There's no proposed hours of operation that, where the residents could, could go to the facility at this point.
Okay. And then the contract said, what, there's a statutory holding period for the animals, and I was wondering, has that been determined? I think that was section B in the contract, what is?
There is, I'm, I'm not sure right now what that time period is, I don't recall.
I believe it is four day, I believe that's the state law he's referring to, and I believe it's four days that we have to keep a stray unknown animal prior to making any other type of adoption or other type of arrangements for the animal.
Okay. And then the final one, and I think this is a difference between our former way of doing it and the new way with Wags &amp; Wishes, is that Wags &amp; Wishes may charge owners a daily boarding fee for a stray or homeless dog if they are returned to their owner, and I was wondering if that had been determined as well? And that would be a difference between the city providing the service and a nonprofit providing the service?
That has not, and that would, that proposed boarding fee would have to be approved by the city as well.
Okay.
But is that a new fee or an existing fee?
There is an, well, there, there was an existing fee for a daily boarding if we had a, if we had a stray dog and the, and we found the owner, there would be both a boarding fee and a impound fee.
Okay, so there is no change?
Right, that's not.
Okay.
The amount may, where that money goes may, but that's a city decision that we're open to.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. I was trying to understand what's the difference from the way the city was doing it versus this new way under Wags &amp; Wishes, and what do residents, can they, what can they expect in terms of their service changes, of who they call, how, how do they work with the DPW and the police department? So I think this is a really good compromise, and I look forward to Wags &amp; Wishes doing before and after photos of the shelter. I've asked someone on the board of directors there to do a presentation to show that how a nonprofit can take over and help in some sort of way, at least with this particular issue.
Thank you. It is exciting and interesting. My question is, have we, this contract is between the city and this organization, which I think is doing great work, but we list them as a Michigan nonprofit organized and existing under the laws of the state. So have we checked and do, we have seen their articles of incorporation, they have a board of directors?
Uh, your honor, I've seen their, I've seen through the state's register of incorporated entities, their articles of incorporation. I don't believe that identifies the board of directors, it just indicates the incorporators.
Is it a non, is it listed as a not-for-profit corporation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I had a question along the same lines. It is definitely, it's a different thing to be a Michigan nonprofit than to be a federal 501(c)(3), so.
I'm sure they don't have that yet.
That was what I wondered, if anyone knew, and unfortunately, I don't think there's anyone here from the board or the organization here.
They are not 501(c)(3).
They're not 501(c)(3), do we know if they are working toward that?
They, in my meeting with Ms. Potter, she indicated that she's working towards that, but that's a process that'll take some time.
Absolutely, can be a year-long process if you need to do edits. The other question has to do with their, their operating and revenue model, and I wondered if I could get a little bit of information about, are they relying solely on charitable donations that would come in as, you know, through their Michigan nonprofit status? If those donations don't come in, what's our fallback plan? I, I work for a nonprofit, have worked for them for, for eight years, and, and you need a fallback plan, you don't build that exhibit, or you don't publish that book, or whatever comes next, and I, I hope that it's not, we don't house that dog or, or help that citizen. So if we, if we don't have an answer to that tonight, I'm, I'm hopeful that we, as a council, would say something to the effect of, if, if this doesn't work out, we're going to have to find the money, this is a service that we need to provide.
The, your honor, the fallback position would be to start talking with open county about their services.
But in the meantime, if something blew up and they ceased operation tomorrow, we would need to step in until some other agreement was found, sort of in the way that we've been stepping in now with the police department handling things. Just putting it out there, there is some risk involved.
It's a good point, and you won't get your answer tonight.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a great organization, I'm really glad that they're doing this, I just wanna make sure that we're aware that there are some risks involved in this, I'm glad we're taking the risk, but that's all I'm saying.
And we, they have insurance, Mr. Chris, I'm sure.
Well, it requires them to secure it, I have not seen a policy to date, but it does require them to have insurance.
Are we protected in the meantime?
Well, they should provide that evidence of insurance, Clerk, as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, so is that part of the agreement?
It is. The agreement.
You're required to show.
In, in paragraph, in Article 7 addresses the insurance requirement.
I appreciate that, sir, I didn't, didn't study every paragraph, thank you.
Yeah, it's in Article 7.
Anything else? Madam, is there a motion then? Is there a motion to approve the license agreement with Wags &amp; Wishes?
Seconded.
Seconded by, support. Councilman Galloway seconds Baker's motion. Discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker, yes, Galloway.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Piana, yes. Mayor Covey.
Yes. Passes. Next item is item H, approval of the police department administration reorganizing plan. Chief, would you mind just introducing that for us briefly?
Yes, your honor, consultation with the city manager, and we discussed the reorganization of the police department after Chief Kitchen retired. The budget as passed included a captain and a chief, and the removal of the detective lieutenant's position. Currently, now that there is a interim chief or a provisional chief, there is no captain, does not appear that there, at least at this particular time, that there's any motivation to replace that position. So as a secondary, second-in-command kind of a position, we would like to reinstall the detective lieutenant position to, as to act as, as a second-in-command. Further, we would have to begin removing some of the previous captain's duties and push those down into that detective lieutenant position, take some of the detective lieutenant duties, push those down to the detective sergeant, and then also take some of the detective sergeant's workload while still keeping a full detective position, he's still holding a full caseload as detective sergeant, but to take some of his liabilities and put those off onto the detective in the patrol division.
All right. And I, I was one of the two that pulled that. Is the position then, you want to reinstate the detective lieutenant position?
That's correct.
Is that an automatic position that someone takes based on seniority, or is that someone you select based on?
There is, currently, there is a person that holds that position, so that would be, that is a, considered a promotion through the police and fire board and the civil service board, it is a separate position other than lieutenant, although there is no pay increase. It is a separate position other than lieutenant, although there is no pay increase.
But is it an automatic, in other words, do you, do you look at the lieutenants and decide which one you would like to make detective lieutenant, or is it an automatic based on seniority that someone moves up that only one person can take it?
No, it is an appointment to that position when it's originally appointed.
So you would select who that is?
It has been selected. You would, it's already been selected. There's a person that holds that position. That was selected from a previous and approved through the-
I thought we eliminated the detective lieutenant position.
We haven't as of yet.
Your honor, the position was eliminated in the budget that began on July 1. The command officers' union contract required 60 days notice of demotions, so that notice was provided, but it hasn't taken effect yet. So what the chief and I are asking under this reorganization plan would be to keep that position, keep that lieutenant in that position, and keep the captain's position vacant.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. As our charter is currently drafted, you cannot become chief without serving sometime in the captain's position. Is that correct?
That's a civil service rule.
That's a civil service rule?
It's actually in the police chief job description that it requires service as, six months' service as the captain to be the chief. So that's a job description that's approved by the Civil Service Board and could be modified by the Civil Service Board in the future. But in talking with Chief Collins about this, it wouldn't be our intent to eliminate the captain's position forever necessarily, but just at this particular time, with this particular set of circumstances, this is the, we believe, the best option for reorganizing administration short term.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, what is the succession plan without a captain? So if our chief were recruited to replace Warren Evans and decided to go, who would, would someone automatically pop up into the chief's position on an interim basis, much like, you know, should our mayor be successful next Tuesday, we have, you know, someone come in?
No, that would be a council decision, in my opinion.
And that's the consensus opinion that the next chief, it wouldn't automatically go from DB lieutenant to chief?
Well, no, the, the police chief appointment is the council's appointment to make, subject to the civil service rules. And so if, in the short term, an appointment needed to be made, then, you know, then there was no person with the qualifications, then those qualifications would have to be modified or we'd have to figure something else out.
All right, and then the other, you know, the one reason why I think we're entertaining this, this evening, is the grant of concessions by the Police Command Union in order to avoid layoffs, something we've been asking for, for some time. What is the cost savings, or what is there a cost savings with the proposed reopening of that contract and, you know, saving those two positions? What, what's the effect on our budget?
The, the command officers' union has agreed to forego the 2% raise that took effect on July 1. I don't have that number with me. Do you remember how much that saves?
I do not have that with me either, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, are we talking hundreds, thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands? What?
Tens of thousands. And, and what we're, what we're talking about doing here is not saving a position per se. We're talking about saving the differential between a patrol officer and a sergeant, and a sergeant and a lieutenant. And also the savings of leaving the captain's position vacant. So I think that the cost savings is there cumulatively to, to make this a good proposition for the, for the city. But also, in fairness to Chief Collins, I think, you know, promoting him to chief and then eliminating the captain and the detective lieutenant position would not put him in a very good spot for success. You know, he needs to have some, some people to support him in his new role. And although he talked about shifting some responsibilities down the chain of command, there are going to be some shifts of responsibility up to the chain of command as well. A lot of his captain's duties, he's taking with him to the, to the chief's office.
It's lonely at the top, they say.
It is lonely at the top.
I'm sorry, just to follow up on my, so this is a, and I know, I'm sorry, this is a 2%, they are, the command union is foregoing their 2% wage increase this year? Is this the last year of the contract? I forget.
That's correct. This collective bargaining agreement expires in July 30, 2011, or June 30, 2011.
All right. So Chief, and you also mentioned needing some, a second-in-command, of course, Chris, so if you take a week's vacation, or you get the flu, and you're out for a couple days, then who, who now would be your second-in-command, or who would be in command of the police department?
Would be the detective lieutenant. And then in his absence, it would be the next senior lieutenant.
Okay, thanks. Other questions? All right. Then again, I, that's, I pulled that to ask those questions, so now the issue is before us, and we would need a motion to approve the administration reorganization.
I move to maintain the detective lieutenant position and keep the police captain position vacant until fiscal year 2011.
And? Motion made and seconded, Piana Baker.
Go ahead. And just as discussion on that, the proposed, or the recommended action in our council packet does not reference the, the 2% wage concession from, is that agreed upon? Are we finalizing that? Or how do we wrap it? I mean, I'm not interested in doing this, I suppose, without that concession from the command union.
Well, I have verbal confirmation from the president of the union that it's been approved. I have a, a letter of agreement that would be in their hands had it not been for the fact that the city's email was down most of Friday. So once we actually get the letter of agreement here in City Hall, we can get the relevant signatures. If for whatever reason, things break down and that doesn't happen, then we can go back and-
And revisit this one.
Revisit this, yeah. But I, I really, I have to give the, the command officers some credit. Obviously, giving up that 2% pay freeze, or 2% pay increase is less than some other employees have given up, but frankly, it's more than a lot of other employees have given up. And this is a bargaining unit that's under contract. They don't have to give up anything if, if they don't want to. And I believe that there are several members of that bargaining unit that intend to retire under this current contract. They want to protect those benefits for the next 12 months. And when we come back a year from now, we may be talking about, you know, a whole other set of reorganizations as, as part of more attrition in the next year.
Thank you.
I would say that I am, I'm willing to, on, on good faith, because of the communications between the, the city manager and the, the lead negotiator from that bargaining unit, I'm willing to go forward with this. I think that there's full intention to, to comply with their offer if we move forward with this.
All right, thanks, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk, could we do the roll call now?
Certainly can. We need to get back there. Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana? Yes. Baker? Yes. Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, your reorganization plan is, is approved, Chief. Thanks. Next item is item I, I believe we wanted pulled.
That's correct.
And that is a resolution of support for the Smart Village. I'm suspecting we just wanted to promote that. Who, who wanted to have that brought forward?
Scott and I both did.
All right. Which of you would like to?
Share it. Here. I'll, I'll be happy to read it.
Okay.
I would move that we adopt the following resolution. Smart is seeking a .59 mil property tax renewal for continued public transportation in southeastern Michigan. Proposed property tax renewal is not a new tax, but a continuation of an existing tax. And Smart relies upon that village for nearly half of its operating funds and as the local match for a substantial portion of its federal funding. Smart's service is important to the region's economy, giving access to more than 916,000 jobs and more than 54,000 businesses located within a quarter mile of a Smart bus route. Smart is making strides to be green, having switched the entire fleet from diesel fuel to a biodiesel blend, and having introduced hybrid electric buses. Be it resolved that the Ferndale City Council recognizes the important contributions of Smart to the citizens of Ferndale and surrounding communities, and further be it resolved that the City Council of Ferndale encourages voters to vote yes on August 3, 2010, to approve the renewal of the Smart Village.
I guess I'd ask you names. I appreciate you reading that for us. There was probably no request, you just wanted to, to share that with the voters.
Just want people to know.
I agree with you. Is, is it a motion? What?
I think he needs a second. Was that a motion?
I guess it was a motion to adopt the resolution.
Councilman Galloway does make that motion. Does Councilwoman Baker second it? Full-heartedly. Me too. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker? Yes. Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, absolutely. That passes unanimously, the renewal of the Smart Village. Last, or at least, next item, Madam Clerk.
That would be Agenda, Consent Agenda Item 6K, Provisional Fire and Police Chief Salary Increases.
All right, well, I'll have Mr. Bruner introduce that. Since he's not here, we'll just have to move on, I guess. There we go. Mr. Bruner, would you introduce or tell us what's up with item K, as in Kellogg's?
Yep, Your Honor. Council made the provisional appointments of Captain Sullivan and Captain Collins to the chief of their respective departments back in May and July. However, at that time, the council did not provide for any increase in compensation, which would have normally been the case. I apologize for not bringing that to your attention at that time. But we, we have a situation now where Chief Collins is actually doing the job of chief for 5% less than he was earning as the captain in the last fiscal year, because non-union city employees like me and him took a 5% pay cut effective July 1. That same cut didn't go into effect for the fire chief, because I think he's still technically a member of the union and entitled to the same rate of pay. So I wanted to bring this issue back before you for some, some reconsideration. In general, I recommend that temporarily upgraded employees receive a 5% increase or the first, the bottom of the salary range for the position that they're taking over, whichever is greater. But, but really, ultimately, that's, it's up for the, the council to decide what, what they feel is appropriate in, in that regard.
Thanks, Mr. Bruner. Just to get clear for me, the, the lower amounts for each of the, of the folks here is what they were making as captains?
No, as was they currently making as of today.
Well, how does that, but it's the same as what they were making as captains, right?
Well, in the chafes, in the case of, of Chief Sullivan, it is what he was making as a captain in the last fiscal year. In the case of Chief Collins, it is less than what he was making as captain in the last fiscal year.
I appreciate that. And the chiefs and all of the senior, or, and the non-union employees all took, or were going to take 5% pay cuts?
That's correct. The non-union city employees did take 5% salary, salary reductions effective July 1.
Okay, my understanding is that included all the appointees, department heads, and yourself?
It did.
So all of them took 5% pay cuts?
We did.
So, so would this 5% we're adding not just be even, work out even? They lost five, we're adding five? Isn't it, brings it right back to the same?
Um, in the, well, in the case of Chief Collins, yes, but in the case of Chief Sullivan, he's earning the, the same rate today as he was in the last fiscal year, so that would be a net improvement.
So he didn't take a 5% pay cut?
Correct. Because he's still technically a member of the fire union.
I appreciate it.
I think.
All right.
So when, when we change the interim chief's positions from interim presumably to permanent, there'll be all sorts of opportunities at that point to adjust compensation packages, I suppose?
Absolutely.
Do you think we can make comment here? Sure, there's a way.
Just to stay in all fairness, because I still am in the union, it would be bargaining outside the unit I'm still part of, so I would respectfully request not to have anything changed until, at a point in time when we sit down in the future.
Well, that's a first, not for you, sir, but for anyone to say, please, don't give me a raise. How are you still in the union, though, if we have promoted you to interim chief?
Well, we haven't had, we don't have a contract or anything. I'm just doing the job, but I'm still in the union as a captain. That's why I'm getting paid the captain's wages across the board. And it's a substantial cut for me, because I'm not working any overtime, which all the guys under me are making billions of dollars, why I, I'm taking.
It's lonely.
And I have not turned in any overtime, even though under FLSA, I could turn in overtime, because that's my pay scale. But I'm doing the job.
Under, under collective bargaining agreement, I think you kind of, FLSA, probably not.
No, probably not, if your, if your department had, or, you know, but I'm, I'm just saying that, I just will soon leave it until we straighten it out. I don't know what the legal aspects of it are, but it would be a slap in the face to the union, and I'm already aggravating a few of them as it is.
Lonely at the top. Chief, are you asking us to, to, to not take action then in your case on this item for tonight?
Yes, please.
I appreciate that, sir. Any questions, other questions from this table?
Well, I, I would prefer to deal with these issues comprehensively when we, we change the status. You know, I hate to deal with these piecemeal, and it's not uncommon for us to do retroactive increases if that's what we, we choose to do. I, I don't know, I, I just don't see why we need to do this, given all the other stuff that's gone on this year.
All right, I appreciate that, Councilman. I, I also appreciate people getting, would like to get raises, and when they get promotions, that they should get a raise, but these certainly are unique times, and, and almost nobody is getting raises, so. But it's up to someone here at the table to make a, a motion if they choose, or we can simply bypass this item.
If I understood the city manager correct, Chief Collins technically is not getting a raise, he's bringing him back up to speed, correct?
Well, yeah, 5%. Well, actually, there's a difference between reducing his old pay by 5% and increasing the current by 5%, but the, the net effect would be to, to be roughly to restore him his salary to what it was in the last fiscal year.
Yeah.
As captain.
Right.
As captain.
So, yes, as a non-union, it's my understanding as a non-unionized employee, he's, his pay cut was reduced by 5%, right?
Correct.
As everybody else is, who's a non-unionized employee.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council, then? It's up to you to make, I can't make motions.
I would table consideration of these, of this agenda item until such time as, I would table consideration of compensation adjustments for both the chief of Police Department and the Fire Department until such time as we take some action to remove their interim status.
Second, is there?
Support.
There's a second for that. Is there a timeline for us to consider going from interim to acting or?
Yes, Your Honor, I thought we would schedule the interview sometime after the first week in August, and move ahead with the appointments perhaps as soon as the August 23 regular council meeting.
So within 30 days?
Yep.
Comments? There's a motion made and seconded, I believe it was Galloway and Baker, to postpone. Seems like it'd be about a month or a month and a half. Discussion?
Table is the word I meant to use.
No discussion on the table.
No discussion then, Madam Clerk. Thank you. How about a vote?
All right. Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana? Yes. Mayor Cobby?
Yes.
Sorry, gentlemen, for now. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That brings us to the council liaison reports, if any.
Anyone have any liaison reports?
Yes, I just want to say again, the Michigan Suburbs Alliance has ended our tenant landlord agreement with the city of Ferndale. We are moving out at the end of the month to a new building location- We are moving out at the end of the month to a new building location at, I don't know the address, but it is above Pearl Vision, and we are excited. We are moving out because when I started here at the Suburbs Alliance six and a half years ago, I was the second employee. We now have 18. We have reached our capacity and our 500 square feet of space, and we would like to thank the city of Ferndale for being an excellent, excellent board and willing to work with us as a tenant, and we really appreciate having the opportunity to have lived here for six and a half years, so.
I think it was nice having you all. Congratulations on that move at Nine and Woodward. Good location.
Thank you.
Good landlord.
I had nothing to do with the selection, by the way. It was not my purview as an employee of the Michigan Suburbs Alliance.
You'd be running up and down the stairs, though, I'll bet. All right, I don't have any of that. Mr. Brunner, anything on these organizations?
Nothing from me tonight.
All right, then we are to call to council. Is that Mr. Fotitis back there?
On the phone.
On the phone. He's on the phone? Maybe someone could call him. I would like to ask him a question, but Chief Sullivan, did the city manager get to you about my request that you give the people of Ferndale a brief idea of what's happening with their electrical grid?
A lot of problems.
Well, yeah.
We had two, basically, two storms that were what you'd call a wind shear, where aircraft worried about leaving the ground or landing, can get knocked into the ground and busted. So they hit hard and fast and knocked down a lot of power. In the attempt to repair some of the things that got knocked down, they move power over to other grids. That power onto the other grids was trying to pump five pounds of dirt into a three-pound bag, and the wires were overheating, and then they began to drop. So Edison then had to start back repairing the grid that's falling because the other grid isn't up and running yet. Edison was very responsive to most of our wire requests, cutting them and making them safe because we don't have the people to sit on them, and getting repairs up as quickly as possible. The private contractors were a little bit slower, but that again, as they're privatizing, cutting back like everyone else, so they were a little bit slower on their main repair, one over on Bowfield. And I think the one by city manager Brunner over on Saratoga got up pretty quick, but that was a pretty good chunk of electrical conduit through the city. Most of it, people worry about calling Edison on small stuff like their house connection and that, that's in a storm, that's going to be days before that gets done. They're going to look at 70,000 people versus 100 people, the 70,000 is going to get fixed first. But we just lost power the other day because, again, the grid is overloaded and somewhere there's a problem. Some of this has nothing to do with storms. A lot of people don't understand, our infrastructure and power grids is ancient, and we all have chargeable phones and chargeable computers, as well as air conditioning's been running because this has been the longest hot string of weather we've had in a long time. That's creating a major drain on these systems, which is basically overloading them and melting wires and dropping them to the ground. I would like to remind everyone about wire safety. We had a case at a police officer's house, and his family was there, and they were just talking. There's no weather going on, they're repairing wires down the road, and a 4800 snapped and landed in between two people standing less than three feet apart. One brother shoved his sister one way, the other brother ran the other way. The repair connector stayed on the 4800, so it didn't cut or damage anything electronically, but it could have very well killed anyone or cut his truck right in half. And so, one of the problems we were having, especially over by the city manager's house, is people coming out of the bars were going under and ignoring barricades and barricading tape. And the wires were on fire and dripping insulation down. And we're trying to tell people, stay out, and it's like, well, I'm a free American, why do I got to stay out of this area? And it's because there's dripping insulation on fire, and the wire could fall, and it'll cut you in half. And I really don't want to have to run in there and do something because you chose to be a free American and stand inside of the danger zone. So, we did have a lot of problems with that. We're coming up with a few ideas of using different kinds of barriers so we can cut off streets. We did have to call the DPS in and bring in barricades, but that is a timeline thing, and we're getting so many calls that we had to move on to the next call, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I appreciate it, and hence my request that, you know, as we go through life, there's not much, it's more inconvenient than folks losing their power. And I wanted them, I wanted the people who watch the show to know that, what is happening, and it confirms what I assume, that it's the extended heat spell that we've had, huge drain on the system.
Major drain.
Antiquated wires. So, I assume that it's good, if people want to help the situation, they could probably try to reduce their use of power for now, even turning up the air conditioning heat.
Cut down. Edison does have that program, if you have central air, that you can be on a separate meter, which is cheaper, but then they send an electric message through, and there's a switch remote in there, and it shuts down your air for that period of time of burden usage. That way, we don't have the wires failing, and there are a couple things.
So try to use less power, use less of that air conditioning. And what about when a brownout occurs, which in my neighborhood we did, is, are there things people should do or not do with brownouts?
Absolutely. In a brownout, you need to shut down air conditioners, refrigerators, or freezers, anything with a compressor, compressor motor, a brownout will severely damage them. So if you can, shut the breakers to those, or just disengage them and unplug them from the wall. I will warn everybody, too, if the wires are down in the neighborhood, you even have to be careful of hardwired phones and cable TV, because those wires still can carry the 4800 volts or higher and electrocute you even though it's only a phone or a cable TV device. That wire's only 12 volts, or et cetera, it's low voltage, but if there's a wire laying on outside, it could be carrying, hence that one we had back up and cut the house on fire.
So southwest Ferndale was out yesterday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that restored now?
I'm not sure, I thought it was, but I'm not absolutely sure if it's totally restored.
It is at my house.
You're back on, all right.
Yeah, because the fire station's on the same thing, because our generator was on, so.
Well, I appreciate your input, and if folks have questions or problems, they can call the fire department?
Yes, absolutely.
Chief?
Also, in the brownout area, the chief is absolutely right about turning your, in a brownout situation, is pull your main, but also make sure that your air conditioning is also shut down, because that was a $3,000 mistake that I made this weekend. My entire system was.
Evidence.
Yeah, I thought my main, I thought my air conditioning system was on the main.
But it doesn't always destroy, because in my case, I did not unplug my refrigerator.
It doesn't always destroy it.
But it could happen, so. Unplug your, turn off your air, unplug your refrigerators.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
A question to follow up, if I could, while we've still got Chief Sullivan here. One of the things that we had on our table this evening was that we may have a presentation from DTE's Community Relations folks at our next meeting. I got several comments from, and I know this, you don't have an answer to this, but I got several comments from residents wondering why the northern suburbs were fixed before the southern suburbs were, and one actually called DTE, and after some badgering, because I know her well, and I imagine there was a bit of badgering, she got the answer of, well, the executives tell us to fix those first. So it will be a question that I still have for DTE next week, if they could come, and obviously, the chief will be here, to talk a little bit about why someone would get that answer.
Well, a lot of those lines, a lot of those things are DTE's policy. We had a unit on scene of a serious wire down, and the DTE rep that they send out in a car or van said, when you guys leave, I'm leaving. And so they called me, and I said, then stay there, and tell them, we'll bill them for being there for more than an hour, but they don't set the safety policy for the city of Ferndale, we do. And DTE has a lot of policies like that that are cut back financially responsible things in their minds, but it could jeopardize us. Back to about 12 to 15 years ago, I just want to remind everyone, a little girl was killed in Hazel Park, little girl, a little boy, I can't remember exactly, but they were sitting on a wire, and they got a house fire, so they left, they had everything taped, she rode her bike under the wire, stood up on her pedals, and hit the wire, which was four and a half feet off the ground, in her head, and it killed her instantaneously. So wires are extremely dangerous. And accountability, we are looking to purchase mitigation equipment for every truck, so no matter who's out on a wire, they can immediately grab it or cut it for life safety purposes because we're spread a little thin. So we're looking at the way we do things and kind of reorganizing how we run out there. But a lot of people don't understand that, and several people on the wires on Bowfield told us that the power was out. The power was being fed from underground through a pipe up to two different circuits. So they saw the wires down on both sides of the pole and assumed that if both wires are down in the pole in the middle, that it can't be live, it was an underground feed. So if anyone had touched them in any way, shape, or form, they would have been killed instantaneously. So wires tricky, electricity's tricky, dangerous stuff.
And just again, while you're still up here, and I'm glad that Mr. Sheehan's still in the room, my thanks to Pat Sheehan and the rest of his crew that was on his truck the night of the big storm, that we had a tree come down on Bowfield. Pat knocked on every neighbor's door that was affected and made sure that everyone knew what was going on. It actually turned into a little bit of a block party because we all stood together outside and didn't go in our backyards, but just so that you hear, Captain, or Chief Sullivan, you know, thank you to Pat and the rest of his crew for making sure that the neighbors who were inside with little kids and not sure it was happening.
Thank you.
Stay out of their backyards.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Byron Fotitis, anything you want to share from the DPW?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you kindly. Anything else, chiefs, chief or chief?
Just briefly, Your Honor, as you know, we had the sound meeting with the DDA on Thursday. During that weekend, we did do some more requests for sound measurement, which we did over in the area of both at Ms. Wells' home and other locations on West Troy Street, and I did review those this afternoon, and there are still no violations in either the A or the C weight. So we are still actively responding to those. The most, almost all of the command staff has been trained by me with the, with the sound meter, so we are responding and are taking that very seriously, and, but we still haven't had any violations of anything that's gone over as of yet.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it, sir. Sherilyn, Sherilyn Tomlin, city clerk?
Yes, sir.
I had mentioned before that we're looking forward to starting up a new group. There's a federal initiative called CERT, Citizens Emergency Response Training, and we're going to go ahead with that. So I'll be setting up an email site, that'll be FerndaleCERT@ferndalefirerescue.org. If anybody's interested, I'm starting a drive now. I and a couple of my officers will be trained in September and get to train the trainer, and then we'll start training CERT groups to respond to Pleasant Ridge, Royal Township in Ferndale, and anybody else we may be joining with in the future. But kind of getting people trained in how to respond to emergencies and base training. So on these wires and that, we would be able to initiate them, similar to the police auxiliary, and aid us when we have an overflow of things that don't necessarily need a trained firefighter there, but need to be sat on by somebody, so.
Very good.
The public's willing and wants to be interested in being trained in an emergency management response, get ahold of us, and we'll look forward to seeing you in the near future.
Thanks, Chief Sullivan. Clerk Tomlin?
The general, I'm sorry, the primary election is a week from tomorrow. Polls are open 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. It is not too late to get an AV ballot. City Hall and the clerk's office are open Monday through Thursday, 8 until 5:30. We will be open this Saturday from 9 until 2 to issue AV ballots. Please exercise your right to vote.
Thank you. Tuesday, August 3rd.
That's correct.
Mr. Brunner?
My thanks tonight to the city attorney and police chief and Mrs. Shear for their work on the marijuana ordinance. They've been working very hard, very diligently to bring that issue back to you as quickly as possible. The Wags and Wishes Agreement as well, a lot of work went into that with both the chief and the city attorney, and then they'll be bringing reports on the noise ordinance at the next meeting, options for changes there, so. Incredible amount of work going on here in the city of Ferndale this summer. No rest for the weary, following what was a protracted budget process in the spring.
Winter and spring was no dance, either.
No, and I, you know, this is the new normal, I think. The pace is picked up, you got fewer people doing more work for less pay than ever before, and a lot of people really stepping up, taking on additional responsibilities. So I thank them for that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chris?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, again, thank you for your work on those, on those various ordinances. Councilwoman Piana?
I just wanted to do an update on the noise ordinance progress. At the last city council meeting, council directed the city staff and the police department to look at the noise ordinance or the sound ordinance for the residents in downtown, and I directed the city manager to look at the actual ordinance themselves, the enforcement policies, and business education. And the DDA did hold a meeting last week in which Mayor Covy and I went, and I thought you did a really good job facilitating, Mayor, and it was an informational session, and I want to thank Chief Collins for really educating everybody. It was an education meeting about how the city police department is responding to complaints and how are they measuring, and we learned that we needed to make some, some changes there, which you are doing. Hopefully, the changes with the ordinance will come to Dan Chris for consideration. There was a noise expert on hand to answer questions, and this noise expert worked with some noise issues at the Detroit Zoo, the city of Dearborn, and recommended that we look at the New Jersey, the state of New Jersey ordinance model for sound as to address some of our issues in our current version. And so I would like to have this come back to council at the end of August, the beginning of September, so that we can make some important decisions that balance, that balance the residents' desires as well as the businesses. So we are making progress, I think it's good progress, and these don't, issues don't get solved overnight, but I think we're taking the necessary steps forward in listening to the residents.
Thanks, Councilwoman, you're right, and it was a good meeting. I'm going to address it briefly on my call as well, and we thank Rosies for hosting the meeting.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And I just, I want to share with the voters and the people who watch this program that Councilwoman Piana was on vacation and went on vacation earlier this week and drove all the way back down from upstate in order to be here tonight. She didn't have to, but she did, and are you going back?
I am.
So she had to drive hours and hours and on her own to come to this council meeting, and I just appreciate that dedication that you did that and now have to drive back, but enjoy your, enjoy the rest of your vacation.
I plan on it, not to think of any of you. That's what vacation is for, right?
Good luck with that.
To relax and forget.
I'll be texting you.
It's been a long meeting. I just encourage folks to vote next Tuesday. Lots of important decisions on whatever side of the ballot you're voting on. Get involved.
You're very right, sir. Councilman?
It has been a long meeting, so I'm going to reserve anything. I just get out and vote, please, August 3rd.
Well, just to say tonight, you know, I work to do my best for the city and give 100% as often as possible. I did let clearly some work commitments get the better of me this past week, and having been as deeply involved in the infrastructure planning process as I have been, was definitely embarrassed, and rightfully so. When I came up short on a couple of answers when it came to the city hall reorganization, I was working from some old information, and will absolutely, regardless of what happens with elections next week and what my position is, will absolutely do better in the future. You know, you can't make everyone happy 100% of the time, and there are probably already some nasty blog remarks or something, whatever, I can take it. Oh, sure, come on, we all get them.
Okay.
And, but what I am so proud that we did tonight was that we were able to differentiate between short-term and long-term goals. That's something that we've really been working toward up here. We've seen what happens in other cities near us when you only plan for the short term, you use all of your reserves, and you leave yourself in a position to have to make really emergency calls, emergency repairs, or just go without basic things. We're seeing, you know, buckets to catch rainwater and computers needing to be covered to keep the rain off of them in Oak Park. We are seeing a city hall that is nearly deserted and not functioning in Hazel Park, and I know they're working just as hard as we are in those cities, but I am so proud that we've made a decision that for the foreseeable future, we will be ADA compliant, we will be accessible to all of our citizens, and we will let people come in the front door of city hall. That is just basic dignity. I'm glad that we voted to do. I'm glad that we voted to do it.
I'm glad you're glad it was well done. Yeah, don't worry about those blogs, that's part of the deal.
Okay, have them.
With regards to the sound ordinance, and I'm all for citizen participation, and I think we saw tonight, the folks that signed the petitions have actually had an impact, and that's good. That's called democracy. I am concerned about another petition that's being circulated, and I hope that folks are very careful about signing just any petition that they get because we are working hard to try to solve the problems of noise and to make the businesses be able to survive while having the neighborhoods still be protected. But my understanding is that this new petition that's out there circulating would be devastating, that if it were, you know, passed, that the levels of sound would be so low that we would literally have to close down downtown, that you wouldn't be able to play music from the speakers, that people couldn't shout, that really you'd have, you'd have to shut down downtown. And, you know, we do live in a city, and so you are going to hear a lawnmower, you're going to hear a chainsaw occasionally, you're going to hear some music once in a while, and there has to be a compromise so that businesses and residents can survive together. So that's our goal, I think, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Piana and all of us up here. Again, I appreciate all the work that the staff did with regards to the marijuana ordinance, and I think when the smoke clears, we're going to have a really good set of rules in place. Don't be smiling.
No pun intended, I'm sure.
The, there wasn't an intended. I also want to encourage people to vote, there's a lot going on. Things like Supreme Court justices are being selected, at least at the beginning of the process, and we are going to end up with a new governor, so these are very, very important. I do want to mention also that with regards to any election that I'm involved in, nothing changes for me after Tuesday. Depending on how that vote goes, you're probably stuck with me at least through December 31 of 2010, if not longer. So with that, are we going into closed session, Mr. Brunner?
I don't have any further collective bargaining updates tonight.
You have no updates on our labor union negotiations?
No pushing.
All right. With that, then, thank you for attending. Thank you for watching. This meeting's adjourned.